Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our June 13th, 2023 Borough Council meeting. Tonight, we are conducting our monthly Borough Council meeting, both in person and virtually. We are glad you have joined us here tonight. During public participation. During the public participation portions and public hearing portions of tonight's agenda, community members joining us via Zoom may raise their hand virtually, and our staff will unmute your microphone and announce your name. You'll then be able to make comments to council. We will start with members of the public who have joined us in council chambers with us tonight, and then move to those joining us remotely. We will have two periods of public comment tonight, one towards the beginning, one towards the end, and public participation, we ask that you limit it to once per participation session. With that, we will go ahead and begin our Borough Council meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence. Mr. Crack, if you can lead us with the roll call. Ms. Berkeley.
President.
Mr. Carmenito. Ms. Dugan. Mr. Kirkman.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Weiss.
President.
Ms. Webb.
President.
Mr. Edwell.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Mr. Gentry is here, Chief is here, Mr. Smith is here, I am here, you have a forum. Thank you very much, and Mr. Carmenio will be joining us a little bit later tonight. He had a prior engagement he'll be coming in from. With that, that brings us to item three on our agenda. We do have two items under presentations tonight. We have Chris joining us from Mallei LP to present to us our 2022 audit report. And Chris, I believe you are teed up to be able to make your presentation.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
We can.
All right, let me share my screen, and I'll pull up the financial statement. All right, can everyone see the financial statement?
We can.
All right, perfect. So I'm going to start on, well, first, I'm Chris Rednard, I'm a supervisor at Mallei. I'm filling in for Dale Abenhauer, he's the principal who runs the borough's audit each year. So to just get right into it, on page four, this is our audit opinion. In the first paragraph, we just explained our opinion, we have an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. That's what you would like to see. The next paragraph is the basis for opinion. This just talks about the auditing standards that we use to come up with our opinion. The next paragraph is the responsibility of management for preparing the financial statements. Then on page five, it talks about the auditor's responsibilities for the audited financial statements. Page six is the required supplementary information paragraph, and this just talks about the management discussion analysis, what pages those are on, the budgetary comparison schedules, and then the pension and OPEB schedules. And those are in the back of the financial statements. And then, lastly, in our report, we talk about the supplementary information, and these are mostly the schedules you'll find in the back of the financial statements, which is the other governmental funds, statement of net position, and statement of activities. So on page seven, this starts the management discussion and analysis. I want to point out that the MDNA is unaudited, but we do make sure that the numbers in the MDNA match our audited financial statements. So feel free to read through the MDNA, I'm not gonna go through it, because I will be covering the numbers in the presentation of the financial statements. I do want to point out on page 10, this is the statement of net position, where you can compare the current year numbers to last year. And then on page 11, you can look at the changes in net position, and again, you could look at the revenues and expenses from this year compared to last year. So then skip to page 18 of the financial statement, this is our statement of net position. This is a full accrual financial statement, so you'll see capital assets, debt, all recorded on here. So for the governmental activities, total assets was $57 million. What makes up most of that is $15 million in cash. Tax receivables of about $523,000, and other various little receivables in there, a grant receivable of $750,000. And capital assets around $40 million. For business-type activities, total assets were around $55 million. What makes up that majority is cash of $17 million, and then capital assets of about $36 million. For the deferred outflows of resources, for the governmental activities was about $5.8 million. And for the business-type activities was about $900,000. And for the OPEB and pension activities, which makes up majority of these balances, we agree those amounts directly to the actuarial evaluation financial statements that we receive. Rel liabilities, total liabilities for governmental activities was around $29 million. 1.4 million of that was accounts payable, and about 20 million of that had to do with bonds payable. 2.6 million was the net pension liability, and I wanted to point out that last year, there was a net pension asset. This year, it changed to a net pension liability, and the only reason for that is just because of market conditions. Obviously, the market was down this year, which has an impact on the pension liabilities, and it can flop from year to year depending on how the market is doing. And the OPEB liability was about 2.2 million for governmental activities. For business-type activities, the liabilities was 6.7 million. There were unearned revenues of about 1.8 million, and bonds payable of about 2.8 million, which is the major things that make that up. The deferred inflows makes majority of this up is the OPEB and pension activity. And again, we agree these right to the actuarial evaluation reports, and you'll see these agreeing to our footnotes later on in the schedule. Which brings us to the net position. For governmental activities, $32 million in net position, which is very healthy, and that's what you'd want to see. And then again, same for the business-type activities, $49 million in net position, which is a very healthy net position. Going on to page 19. For governmental activities, total expenses were about 13.8 million, and you could see the breakdown of the function and programs that make up those total expenses, and majority of the expenses this year came from public safety of about $9.3 million. And then business-type activities, you'll see total business-type activity expenses were about $9 million. And each fund's total expenses is explained in that column, so the water fund had about $4.1 million in expenses, the sewer fund about $2.2 million in expenses, parking fund $583,000, and sanitation fund about 2.1 million. The next column is the charges for service, so these are services that the borough provides and charges to the community. So for the governmental funds, they made about $2.4 million in these services. And then the business-type revenues, about $11 million. And I'll cover the business-type revenues a little later in their own proprietary financial statements. And operating grants and contributions for governmental activities, about $925,000 this year, and $372,000 for the business-type activities. Grant revenue is about $472,000 for governmental activities. And then to go to the next page. The total general revenues from the borough was about $12.2 million. Majority of that $12 million comes from tax revenue. And then other general revenue for the business-type activities was $742,000. So there was a positive change in net position of $2.2 million for governmental activities. To again bring the fund balance from $30 million to about $32 million, which is a very good change. And then for business-type activities, $3.5 million change, so from $45 million to about $49 million. And again, that is a very healthy change. The next page, now this is the governmental funds. The main difference with the governmental fund financial statement to the government-wide financial statement is governmental funds are booked on a modified accrual basis, so you're not going to see capital assets on the balance sheet for governmental funds, you're not going to see bonds payable. That all, all those expenses get expensed as incurred. So for the general fund, total assets made up about $11.4 million. And majority of the assets just relate to the cash account of $10.9 million, and we send bank confirms out and confirm all material cash accounts. For other governmental funds, which you can also find on page 74, which are all the funds that make up the other governmental funds. Their total assets were $4.1 million, and the total cash of $4 million is majority of those total assets. Rel liabilities, total liabilities of the general fund was $1.5 million. And accounts payable made up a significant portion of that, of around $1.4 million. And then total liabilities for the other governmental funds was only $62,000. Unavailable revenues on property taxes was about $169,000 for the general fund. Unbalance for the general fund was $9.7 million, and in note K, you will, which we will go over in a little bit, you'll see what the board has restricted, committed, or assigned for future expenses. And then again, for the other governmental funds, the total fund balance was about $4 million. Page 21 of the financial statement, this is just a reconciliation of how to get from the governmental fund fund balance to the government-wide fund balance. As you can see, it's just putting back on all the capital assets, the pension activity, OPEB activity, and all the long-term liabilities such as compensated absences and bonds payable accrued interest, things like that. Page 22 of the financial statement is the changes in fund balance. So for the general fund, total revenues was about $11.9 million. And again, majority of the revenues come from the tax revenue and services that the borough provides. And other governmental funds, total revenue is about $4 million. And majority of the revenues come from tax revenue with $2.4 million, or intergovernmental revenues of about $1.3 million. Total expenditures was $15 million for the general fund, and majority of those expenses come from public safety. And the reason for the big increase in public safety expense this year was the addition of the firehouse of about $4 million this year, so. And then total expenses for other governmental funds was about $3.8 million. I also want to highlight in the general fund that this year, the borough refinanced its 2012 general obligation bond. So that was paid off, and a 2022 general obligation bond was issued for about $6.5 million this year. That was the outstanding balance at year-end. And so a total net change in fund balance of negative $3.7 million for the general fund, which brought down the fund balance from $13.5 million to $9.7 million, which mainly relates to the expenditures for the new capital additions of the firehouse. And then other governmental funds had a positive change of $1.6 million to bring the fund balance from $2.4 million to $4 million. And then page 23, this is just the reconciliation, how you get the change in fund balance from the governmental fund statements to the government-wide, which is just the difference of how revenues and expenses are recorded on the various statements. The next page, yeah, this is the proprietary funds, these are more run like a normal business. These are the counter for on the full accrual basis, so you're going to see capital assets and bonds payable, and the pension and OPEB liabilities on these statements. And we kind of went over these already on the government-wide statements, it's just now you can see what makes up the total business-type funds by fund. So I'm, feel free to look over those numbers, I'm not going to go too much into them. And then next, on page 25, you can see the statement of cash flows. I'm sorry, not page 25, page 26, statement of cash flows, you could see the ins and outs of cash. Page 28 is the fiduciary funds. The pension fund, the total assets was 30 million, and majority of the total assets come from the mutual funds at fair value of around $27 million, and a cash balance of $1.9 million. And for the custodial funds, the total assets are all related to the cash balance of $828,000. On page 29, this is the statement of changes in fiduciary net position. You'll see there is a change in net position of negative $6.7 million for the pension fund, and that solely just relates to the market conditions. Again, you'll see the net decrease in the fair value of the investments in the current year was $7.1 million. So that's the main reason for the decrease in fund balance. And then the custodial fund had total additions of $1.1 million, and return of escrow payments of $900,000, or a positive change of $177,000 to bring fund balance up to $828,000. Page 30, this starts the summary of significant accounting policies. This is going to explain every, how the borough accounts for all their financial statement line items. So feel free to read through note A if you're confused on any of the accounting procedures or any of the financial statement line items are reported on. Note B talks about when the taxes are collected. Note C will explain more on cash balances, and the borough had a total bank balance at year-end of around $35 million. And again, note C continues about the investments as well, of the $27 million in the pension investment fund. 12 million of that related to domestic equities, 7 million international equities, and 7.9 million domestic fixed income. Now, B on page 41, talks about the inter-fund balances, so the general fund owes about $15,000 to the water fund and the sewer fund. It was about $1.8 million to the water fund. And then later on in the footnote is the inter-fund transfers, and the transfers are used more to show revenue or expenses on different funds. So you can see the ins and outs. Note E is our capital asset reconciliation, and the major increase in capital assets this year was for the community center and the new firehouse. Note F is the long-term debt footnote, so this is going to show all the future principal and interest payments that the borough is obligated to make, and summarizes the beginning balance of the liabilities as of January 1st, 2022. It will then show any new debt put on the books, it'll show any retirements or payments made to get the outstanding balance at 12/31/2022, and show the amount due within one year. And note G starts our pension footnote. So the one thing I wanted to highlight on the pension footnote is again, the liability changed from a $4.1 million asset to a $920,000 liability. And again, this is mainly due from market conditions, and feel free to read through note G. We just explained all the estimates used in the actuarial valuations to come up with this liability. And then note H is the same, it's a pension footnote, but for the employees instead of the police. And again, those that had a pension asset of $1.4 million, and this year is a $2.3 million pension liability, again, just due to market conditions. Note I is our post-employment benefits footnote, and again, this footnote just summarizes all the estimates and how the OPEB liability is determined, and we agree these right to the actuarial evaluation reports. And then note K just talks about the fund balance designations, and what monies are restricted, and what they're restricted for, what they're committed to, or what the borough has assigned a certain amount of money to. So feel free to read through these and see where monies will be going in the future. And then note L is just the contingent liability footnote, just talking about legal issues, which I believe there are none. And next is the required supplementary information, I'm not going to go through any of these, but it pretty much just talks about the budget to actual, we already kind of discussed the main variances in the budget to actual this year, where the public safety was underbudgeted for expenses of about $4 million, but that all relates to the fire firehouse additions, and total revenues had a favorable variance of about $1.5 million, so. And the rest of the required supplementary information mainly relates to the pension footnotes and the OPEB footnotes for the last nine years, and then it'll also go into the other governmental fund financial statements. So that kind of concludes my presentation, unless if anyone has any questions or wants me to elaborate on anything else.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions from members of council on this year's audit review from any questions on the report here? Okay, Chris, I think that's good.
Awesome, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.
Have a good night. Having received our 2022 audit presentation, is there a motion to accept the 2022 audit as presented? Second, motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Weiss, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? I opposed. Motion carries 7-0. All right, and with that, we'll move into our first round of public participation. For members of the public who weren't here when we started the meeting, we will start with public participation for those who have joined us in the room physically. Once we move through the queue of that, we will move to anybody who is joining us remotely via the Zoom platform. We do ask the members of the public step up to the podium, sign their name and address, and let us know, and introduce themselves when they get up to the podium, as well as when you're calling in from Zoom. We do ask that you try to keep your comments to less than three minutes. And Mr. President, I would add that if any members of the public are here for the conditional use hearing, the opportunity to comment on that would be during the hearing, not this public participation period. Very good, thank you. So with that, we'll open up the first round of public participation.
Good evening. My name is David Lutzker, resident on Morgan Street, and president of the Phoenixville Green Team. The presence of plastic in our communities is a health risk. The first thing I noticed when I saw the policy committee agenda was that the new plastics policy was under the health and safety section. We humans have abused our environment so much and for so long that plastic is now omnipresent. It is everywhere, literally, in our soil and air, in our food and water, and even in our bodies. Plastic is a toxin for humans. Though the increase in cancer and asthma and mental health problems has not been proven in large double-blind studies to be caused by plastics, in my personal, non-professional opinion, that's only a matter of time. I'm proud to be a member of a community that recognizes its danger to our health and is willing to take steps to address the problem. On behalf of the Green Team, the Re-Re-Re Plastics Group, which is jointly sponsored together with the Phoenixville Area Transition, we support the adoption of the policy as written. We're willing to work with businesses that foresee difficulties in complying to find solutions, suppliers with an eye on the bottom line. We're in this together, council, staff, business owners, residents, oil industry executives, CEOs, and lobbyists. We all need to drink, breathe, and want to pass along clean air and clean water along to future generations. So we look forward to the adoption of the policy, thank you.
Good evening, Dennis Spencer-Mucker, you know I've been coming here quite often about an issue, whether a classic car and an antique car can be considered as such if they're literally torn from one end to the other. And I took it on myself to call the Department of Transportation in Harrisburg, and they informed me that not only do they have stipulations, but the form that you actually fill out when you go to do your paperwork to get the antique tag, or to get the tag that would say it's a classic car, which some hot rod enthusiasts do prior to getting their antique license because of the time variation. It has to be a 25-year or older vehicle. Now, that person told me that if you, in fact, are just writing whatever you feel like writing, the maximum penalty is $2,500 or, and/or one year in prison. I did have this little card to show what a classic car should actually look like. But what happens is, if you do a good job on your classic car, you get a trophy, and I think you can see this a lot better than this little paper. But anyway. We're still doing work, we're happy about the progress that is being made. And I wanted to thank the council for allowing me to present this. Thank you.
Just for meeting minutes, Mr. Carmenio is joining us remotely now.
Hi, my name is Travis Forbey Jr., and I live on 410 Heckle Street in Kingsville. I just wanted
I just wanted to address the concern, an issue that I have. I've noticed that there was signs being put up on our, on our street. There's probably about maybe six of signs or so, something like that's covered up with a little white bag, I mean, orange bag over and stuff like that. So from what I've heard from through some of my neighbors and stuff like that, so it's saying that it's a no parking sign on there that could be potentially be approved tonight. So my concern is that if you guys approve of this tonight, that could affect the parking for us that's around in that neighborhood. Because a lot of people, like if you come over by area, you see a lot of homes are being built and put up in. And you see Phoenix Hills continue to grow and get bigger, which is a great and phenomenal thing. But it's also you can see that there's increase in cars and people and stuff like that, which is a huge concern. So if you take away the parking up towards that part of the street that has those signs, then you're going to revert some of those people that may be visiting or who could be potentially living at those houses or parking the street that might come up towards where we're at and then other people. And it's going to make it a little more difficult for us to try and find parking. So Phoenixville as it is, and I'm sure you guys know and you see it, it's already hard enough as it is to trying to find parking. And I see you guys are doing phenomenal job to add additional parking for people who are visiting or in the community, which is great to see and stuff. And I'm very happy to also see that I've seen some signs even put up saying, just making our street a one-way street and not allowing people to go down. So I think you guys are doing a great job in adding those, those things in to make the roads and better and stuff like that. But I definitely do would hope and wish that you guys would not approve of those signs and at least maintain that parking there for people, whether it's visiting, whoever's there. So it doesn't affect everybody else that could potentially lose parking would really make it really difficult for us. I mean, that's it. And, you know, thank you much, so much for your time and listening to me.
My name's Jesse Laredo. I'm actually Travis's neighbor. I'm here for the same reason. Basically, you know, our little section of Heckle Street on the north side is a spot that we have always, it's quiet back there. There's been, I think, eight houses built. We've lost a little bit of parking. We've also gained probably about sixteen cars over there. One of my primary concerns is, I mean, I don't particularly have parties at my house, but people, kids' birthday parties, stuff like that. Literally, no one will have anywhere to park. And it causes a lot of added stress because they're going to be parking like blocks and blocks away. From my understanding, I think part of the challenge is the trash truck. On Fridays, there may be a slight issue with that. And of course, you know, there needs to be accommodations for that. But, you know, I'm not nearly as well spoken as Travis about these things. It's definitely a very important thing for our little part of the community there. Make sure we do have parking. And I do understand there needs to be some regulations with it. But it's definitely an important part of our little community up there. Thank you guys for the consideration.
Any members of the public are joining us via the Zoom platform, which make any public comment if you want to raise your hand digitally. Work through the queue as it appears. I will just say that Heckle Street topic will be thoroughly discussed further in the agenda.
All right. My name is Dennis Floria. I live at four twelve Heckle Street. I'm here with Travis and Jesse for the same complaint with parking. Understand, there's got to be regulations and rules. Big thing is, is they said it's tight back there. And the trash truck, I totally understand. They're trying to get around traffic and all that, but it's tight. And we're already having a problem parking already. And with putting in no parking signs, I mean, like I said, it just makes it further commute for people that come and visit me at my house or my daughter's friends and family to come over and visit. We have parties often. So I got a bigger family, but I just want to let it be known that, you know, you can give them no parking signs put down. I appreciate it. That's all I got.
Any members joining us via Zoom, if you want to raise your hand digitally. Otherwise, it looks like we've moved through the queue here in the room.
At this time, Mr. You all, there's no hands raised.
Thank you, gentlemen. With that, we'll close the first round of public participation and move on with our agenda here. First up tonight, we have our consent agenda. Understanding item. So five D six has been requested removed. So that will be pulled out and placed into the finance committee. A portion of tonight's agenda later in the night. Any other items in consent agenda? Any questions, comments or requests? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve. Second, motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Not sure if James is able to actually. Okay, so for the moment, we'll call it seven zero. And with that, that takes us to item six of tonight's agenda, communications council participation. Is there time to discuss any items that are brought to council's attention? Any updates, any congratulations or otherwise?
Yes, Mr. President. Couple of dates. One, I just wanted to say we've had our first couple of weeks of our Phoenixville Inside Out closure of Bridge Street. I think it's been a really successful time, a lot of engagement from the community. It's a delight to see the entire community coming out and coming together to enjoy the ambiance and character of the town. Received a lot of good feedback about it and just wanted to take a moment to celebrate that so far and say, you know, we've got more in store and we're going to continue to evolve the, the event. But so far, things are wonderful. And then somewhat related to that, I just wanted to draw a little attention to the Chester County Pride Fest that we just had this past weekend. I was down there with my family and I thought it was a wonderful, joyful, welcoming, inclusive celebration of the diversity and the dignity of all members of our community. And I just thought it was a wonderful display of the, the type of community that we live in and we attempt to foster here in council. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that we were joined by a couple state and federal representatives that came down to celebrate with us. The folks that I was able to see were state representatives, Melissa Schusterman, Chris P. Ellie, Paul Freel, state senators Carolyn Comida and Katie Muth, U.S. Representative Chrissy Houlihan and Chester County Commissioner Marion Mousk. So it was a delight to see all them coming out to celebrate our community with us. And, and I was delighted to be a part of it. That's all.
And just a couple of dates for myself as well. The, this afternoon, we, we had the pleasure of welcoming the Chester County Commissioners as well as the Chester County Planning Department as a walking tour of the revitalization of Phoenix downtown. So that was an absolute privilege to, to host and provide firsthand accounts on the successes of the projects that the county has largely helped fund and support over the years. Secondly, I wanted to offer a big congratulations to More Kids on Bikes. They are our nonprofit partner that helps with the installation of the Phoenixville Mountain Bike Skills Park that is now open. Earlier this month, many of us were able to join and take part in the ribbon cutting. And then a couple of days later, the grand opening party that they held, I think hundreds have attended daily at this point. But this project is, is amazing as it is a community-funded park improvement. And it's definitely a major upgrade to Reservoir Park, will no doubt be a community hub for all sorts of fun and adventure going forward. So I just, I do appreciate this partnership that we've had with More Kids on Bike, bikes and their, their leadership team there. They've been a great community asset and been a pleasure to work with. And as we have more improvements on the way this fall at Reservoir Park, we are adding more sidewalks, more moving and replacing the fence around the reservoir and improving some of the parking. So it's nice to see parking problems existing at the parks as, as a testament to how popular they are. And lastly, I think congratulations to us all as World Atlas named us one of the cutest small towns in America. So I didn't want to let that go, go by unnoticed. Yeah, yeah. Mr. Kirk.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Reeb. I have a couple of things. One, I had the pleasure of meeting with John and Anthony Colaruso to tour what they've done at two eleven to two twenty-one High Street. And it's, it's something like sixteen new market rate apartments up there. It's large renovation of a substantial portion of that block. And I, I've been in town more than forty years and that is sort of the, the vision, the manifestation of the vision that a lot of people have had for that stretch of High Street. And in talking with the Colarusos, they wanted to express their gratitude to borough staff and borough police department for their support as they work through the various issues in bringing that project about. So so they, if you can get up there and see what they've done, it's rather impressive. I also want to acknowledge that we're coming up on fifteen years here with our borough manager, Mr. Gene Crack. And I calculated that, that, that something like seven hundred twenty night meetings. And up until then, I, when Gene came here, I was, I'd lived in town twenty-nine years. At that time, we'd had nine managers in twenty-nine years, which is a burn rate of about one every three years. So so we've, we've beat that by a multiple of five. And just a couple of things that have been accomplished in that time, although many of you know what they are, but four buildings have been built, including this one, the rec center, the fire department and the, the streets department. And we have four new parking among a number of other things, such as you can't go to a cross intersection in this town without seeing what this, which street you're on. And that wasn't always the case in Phoenixville. And it's, it's those things like that, that that show fifteen years ago, and I was on that council that made that decision to hire Gene Crack. I think that was a pretty good decision at the time, and I stick by it. So but, but congratulations for fifteen years. I look forward to see what happens in the next fifteen years in your tenure. And I wanted to add, if I may, that we are the only two people who could say fluorescent leech and Eddie to each other and know what the hell we're talking about.
Any other updates from council or?
It's very hard to follow that. And it does seem like it was a lifetime ago. I did want to thank the community for coming out to Dogwood. Thank borough staff, the police. We had a very successful Dogwood. We have not had a meeting since then. So thank you for that. To piggyback off Mr. Weiss, Pride was a very interesting experience this year. It was a beautiful downtown experience, but I would say the Alliance did start prepping prior and they had conversations about diversity leading up to, and I got to facilitate one. And it was a really nice way of talking about diversity within our community and really planning and getting to, to know the Alliance, you know, they're really trying to branch out in Chester County, but they choose to celebrate the festival in Phoenixville. So I think that says a lot for us. We also have started in full swing. It was approved a while ago, the Firebird Festival. So there's a fundraiser for that this week. So if you'll check social media for that. And I had a fun day with our assistant borough manager today, Kelly Get Street. And we're starting to think about holidays. I know Mr. and she have been working on a lot of fun things. So I'm excited. That's a little teaser. I won't say more, but more announcements will be coming out soon. So.
Any other council updates or participation? All right. With that, Mayor Erschler.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you to those joining us here in person and those who are joining us virtually. We have had a very busy month since our last meeting. A couple of thank yous. Thank you to residents of the French Creek Manor for throwing the first responder luncheon. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend, but it was an extraordinary event that they put on for all of our first responders here within our community. Also, a very special shout out and thank you to all of our daycare employees and providers. May twelfth was actually a special day of appreciation to honor all those who work in the childcare industry. So thank you for doing that. Very special shout out to two students from the Phoenixville Area High School, Brendan and Alyssa Cunningham. They actually put on a color run that took place on the Sunday after Dogwood. And that was in honor of Miss Trout and Mr. Phipps, who were two members of our Phoenixville Area School District family, who unfortunately passed away due to cancer. Also, a very special congratulations to our state representative, Paul Freel. He does have his new office, which has now opened in the last month, and that is at sixty-eight Glock away in Pottstown. And that's again, State Representative Paul Freel. His permanent office is sixty-eight Glock away in Pottstown. However, he does have special office hours throughout the month at different locations in Phoenixville. So check his website. If you do have any questions, I do know sometimes we even host them here at the rec center. Also, the Phoenixville Area Senior Center hosts them too. Thank you to our Kiwanis Club for the Patriotic Day. Patriotic Day always takes place the Friday before Memorial Day. And it's just a great way to get all of our elementary school kids together in Reeves Park and really celebrate and kick off the Memorial Day weekend and really take a moment to remember what Memorial Day is about and to thank all of our veterans and those who have served in armed services. Special thank you to our Chamber of Commerce. If you had an opportunity to go out to Lemonade Day, it was a course, a six-week course where they actually taught students about entrepreneurship. And it all culminated in a day of them actually selling their lemonade and other incredible wares in the Main and Bridge Street parking lot. It was a lot of fun. I've had a lot of lemonade. If you've never tried it, please try ringing your glasses with pop rocks before drinking your lemonade. It is quite exciting. Also, very special shout out to Crescendo, Phoenixville. They had their final concert of the year. Crescendo, Phoenixville is a very special program that takes place at Barclay Elementary School. It's a nonprofit here in the community that allows access to string instruments right within our elementary schools. All free of charge. They help pair the students with violins. It's an absolutely incredible program to bring music and music appreciation to students of all backgrounds in the community. Sir Optimist, this last month also dedicated their peace garden to Tammy Klotzbach. As many of you know, Tammy was a force here within the Phoenixville community and unfortunately passed away within the last year. And so in a very special way, they dedicated their peace garden to her. And the peace gardens located up near Fisher Park, you know, the tennis courts. So if you ever have an opportunity to be up there near the Acme, check it out. A very special congratulations to Father John Nunes from St. Anne's Parish. He is retiring after twenty-seven years of service to the Phoenixville community. Of course, Father John Nunes is, is known throughout the community, not just certainly at St. Anne's, but a very active member of the clergy association and a very active supporter of a number of nonprofits here within our community. Special congratulations to our kindergartners, our fifth graders, our middle school, and of course, our high school students who have all had their moving up or graduation ceremonies within the last week. And also a very special congratulations to Dr. Alan Fink, who is retiring from his role as superintendent of our school district. In addition to Pride, which was absolutely incredible, the Historical Society of the Phoenixville Area also had their strawberry festival, which takes place every year. An incredible time to go out and get strawberry shortcake. Upcoming events, you know, because we're not short of events, we have our Phoenixville Street Art Festival taking place this Saturday, eleven AM. We have a car shelter Reeves Park taking place at eleven AM. Also on Saturday, a purple and white basketball game is also taking place on Saturday at the rec center. Juneteenth on Sunday, we are having one of our first huge in-person Juneteenth celebrations. That's going to be on Bridge Street from two to six PM on Sunday. And of course, Juneteenth celebrates June nineteenth, which was the official day where the throughout the United States, everyone had received the information that slavery had been abolished. And so it's a really special day for us to commemorate here within the borough, taking place on eighteenth at two o'clock to six PM on Bridge Street. Also Dinner on Ver. If you haven't had an opportunity to attend, it's a secret gala. It's a pop-up green gala. Go to dinneronver.com. You can buy tickets. Also, next week, the thrift store, if you haven't been to our beautiful Phoenixville Hospital thrift store, it has moved from Church Street and is moving up next to the hospital in the old Bookworm location. So the house that's on the hospital property, go check that out. And then, of course, the fireworks for the borough will be So the house that's on the hospital property, uh, go check that out. And then, of course, the fireworks for the borough will be on the second of July. And just a happy and safe Fourth of July to all. And so, thank you for being here. Thanks for being part of this incredible community and thanks for making Phoenixville what it is.
Thank you, Peter. With that, we don't have any appointments at the moment for uh our various boards and commissions, but we do have current vacancies that exist on zoning, harbor and human relations. If you're looking to volunteer and take part in any of our uh boards or committees or commissions, please reach out to one of your, to your Borough Council representative or staff. We'd be happy to walk you through the process of joining and volunteering for one of our boards or committees. With that, that takes us to our new business section of tonight's agenda. We have a number of items to consider. First up is a ordinance to advertise.
Mister President, I'll make a motion to schedule and advertise an ordinance, ordinance, sorry, acceptance of row dedications from nineteen East Grant Street.
Motion, I miss Berkeley, second my Ms. Webb, questions on the motion or background on this? Mister Dilling, if you want to just give us brief background on the.
So nineteen East Grant Street offered its right-of-way for dedication of land development. That project is now nearing completion, um and we need to pass an ordinance in order to accept the.
Any other questions on the motion?
Mister President?
Yes.
Would that have the potential to create once on on-street parking in that neighborhood? And that may not be an appropriate question for the solicitor or or the manager, but I'll put it out there.
Well, I I can answer that. I mean, the right-of-way would be owned by the borough. I don't have the plans in front of me to look at where the the new curb was built and how much area there is there. I do believe that there were sidewalks put in in that right-of-way, um so it probably impact those sidewalks. Uh, it's the short answer is, we would then own that property. But I I don't know off the top of my head how that development is laid out and whether that flexibility to widen the car.
It is it's mostly uh the curves. So uh this road was there when they built the projects, the projects created the curb and sidewalk location between the the that location right in there, right at the corner and then the where the far higher. So it's mostly given us the the curves inside location.
Any other questions on the motion to advertise this ordinance? Seeing none, all those in favor. Motion carries seven zero. Up next is our, is our liquid fuels uh base bid contract. With council's pleasure for our repaving.
I'll make a motion to award the twenty twenty-three Liquid Fuels Road Program Base Bid Contract to Merco Construct uh Constructors, Inc. In the amount of six hundred forty-nine thousand five hundred eighty-seven as the lowest responsible bidder as recommended by the borough engineer.
Motion, my Ms. Berkeley, second my Mister Weiss for uh for liquid fuels repaving. Any questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. I opposed motion carries seven zero. Up next, we have a a bid consideration for Paradise Street.
I'll make a motion to for the Paradise Street Improvement Project Contract, Marino Corporation, in the amount of one million three hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty and ninety cents. Got to get that ninety cents in there as the lowest responsible bidder as recommended by the borough traffic engineer.
Motion, my Ms. Berkeley, second my Ms. Webb, this is to rebuild and improve Paradise Street. Any questions on this motion? This will give us our final connection to the firehouse from that.
Yeah, if I could just, I I would just take a quick summary of what has to be done and uh and and can we do it now? Because I know there was some issue of right-of-ways and so.
The uh the section of Paradise Street that this covers is basically from the the creek or firehouse to center. We had to break the project into two seg- segments. Uh, the good thing about this is that it doesn't invoke uh all of the utilities and and Penda uh concerns. So we'll take the road to center. It'll line itself up for the second phase, which will be from center uh to the fourth leg, which will actually be on the other side of that road between Vision Chevrolet and the department contracts there. Uh, there's a lot of utility work there because you got the Pico power lines, the gas lines, sewer lines, storm sewer lines, water lines, many lines uh that exist or in that location. So we wanted to break the project into good-sized chunks and we can I expect it will be able to do the second phase next year.
And at the the design at this point, what impact is it having on the San Out Field or the resolve that issue?
Uh, I'll be, actually, I'll be reaching out to uh John at the Babe Ruth League. Um, I expect since we're now coming in on the second half of June, their league ends in the first part of August. By the time we get through the contracts the pre-construction and and all of that, we should be able to avoid impacting any of their game plan because there will be an impact on the field. We'll have to take the fence down to do some of the work. But based on everything that I can see, we'll be lining up on the other side of the schedule and should have no impact on that. I'll be reaching out to John here in the next day or so.
But the field will remain, when we're all set and done, it'll remain intact with regulations.
As you, as you see it today, that's that's what it should look like. Only the the steel bent wall that everybody sees there will be really nice uh concrete brick stack.
Thank you. Any other questions on this motion or this project? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed. She carries seven zero. Next up, uh, this is a is the uh accepting of the the work that was done as the uh uh More Kids on Bikes uh improvements to the mountain bike park. What is council's pleasure for this? Close out motion.
Mister President, I'll make a resolution, the council of uh Phoenixville officially accepting the dedication by bill of sale of the mountain bike improvements in Reservoir Park.
Motion, my Mr. Moore, second by Mister Weiss, questions on this motion? And I just want to say, I do appreciate all the work that More Kids on Bikes put into this park. Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed. She carries seven zero. Next up, we have a a settlement agreement with Fillmore Village. What is council's pleasure for this item?
Mister President, I'll make a motion to approve the settlement agreement with Fillmore Village. Community Association related to the condemnation of two thousand six hundred and thirty-six square feet for road purposes whereby the borough will pay the association fourteen thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars for the estimated just compensation and attorney's fees for the association in consideration of the association losing its rights to con- uh contest the condemnation of any for uh any further subject to any amendments deemed necessary by the borough solicitor and further authorizing the borough council president, borough manager and borough solicitor to execute the agreement and any other documents necessary to affect the agreement.
Motion, my Ms. Berkeley, second my Mister Weiss, questions on this motion? Great, seeing none, all those in favor. I opposed. She carries seven zero. Sorry, Dana, sorry, six zero. Thank you. And finally, we have a uh an agreement for uh the agreement between Rockwell Victory Bank and the Borough for ninety-nine Bridge Street. This is a update as ninety-nine retreat is sold to a new property owner, so we need to update our agreements. It sounds like for uh for working use, so what is council's pleasure on this action?
I'll make a motion to approve the sub um ordination, non-disturbance and a tournament um agreement with the Victory Bank and Rockwell Phoenixville LLC for the borough's parking lease on ninety-nine Bridge Street, subject to any amendments deemed necessary by the borough solicitor and further also authorizing the borough council president, borough manager and borough solicitor to execute the agreement with any other documents necessary to affect the agreement.
Second. Motion, my Ms. uh Ms. Berkeley, second my Mister Moore, questions on the motion?
I'm just gonna add a little bit of background to this, so. Subordination and non-disturbance agreement, which is commonly referred to as an S N D A, uh is very common request by a lender. And basically, it happens when uh there is a lease on a property and a new person is purchasing a property, they're getting a loan, and the lender wants to know that their mortgage is going to have priority over a lease. In return for what is called the subordinate, subordination, they agree to give you a non-disturbance. The non-disturbance means that if they were to ever have to foreclose on the property, our lease would not be disturbed. Our lease would remain even if the bank was holding them free under. So it's a give and take and it's very common in these commercial type type transactions.
Any other questions on this uh S N D A? Yeah. Previews are okay. I've seen none, all those in favor.
I opposed.
Motion carries six zero. Uh, under item ten tonight, we have two items to consider for resolutions ordinances. Uh, the first one's dealing with motor vehicles, the second one's dealing with with boards and committees. What is council's pleasure for chapter fifteen?
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance amending chapter fifteen motor vehicle.
Motion, my Ms. Berkeley, second my Mister Weiss. So this is the item that will want some background information and some uh it would be good to have just some discussion as to this is, right, okay. To to give some ca- in some um background as to what led us to this, uh what we're considering, what we're looking to adjust and for what reasons. Uh, Mr. Crack, if you want to lead us off on this one, because I know this is, this came out of the blue a little bit, but.
What it did, um, we, we originally started with a a concern uh for of traffic and parking on Grand Street. And although it was never, there was no signs up there, uh in doing the research, I became aware decades ago, Emmett Street was actually designated between the Oak Street area and and further up as one way. It just wasn't marked. The issue uh then presented itself with the new addition uh that you just talked about where the right-of-way area was was created. First of all, the road is very narrow, uh and it always has been. Uh, the east side of the road towards the river was anticipated that there was going to be continued development, the development at the bottom of Pecul Street that was created nearly twenty years ago, and then more recently, a smaller segment that was added at the the north end of Pecul Street. Uh, but on the s- uh the southern end of that, there's a basin down there and then the hill rises up. That area was actually supposed to be developed as well. And so as you could appreciate, we would want the developer to pay for the the curb line and the sidewalk and the repair of the road. Unfortunately, for whatever reasons, the the owner of the property have never gotten to that point of being able to do that. That road on the the east side of the riverside is very there's nothing to hold it back, so it's falling away. The issue uh then becomes uh an issue of true safety. I I recognize that the the addition of the 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 homes that's created a curb line and and a nice sidewalk in in that location between Pecul Street and uh, I mean, between Emmett and and that area down in there. The issue though still is that the the east side of that road is in in disrepair. And it's really, you know, we would have to put in curbs and sidewalks in order to hold that back. It'd be nice if we could just wait for that. And so we have to then, you know, look past that and think, okay, now we have a safety issue relating to, well, we have the truck, the the trash trucks. And we did resolve that a month or so ago with regard to creating an hour uh limit for parking uh as you get towards Dayton Street. But the other issue is the the ability of our uh fire apparatus to get in and out of there. And I I drove it again today just to prepare myself for tonight. We've got to go down Oak Street. We've got to trim some trees back in there because the the fire trucks just can't get back through there. If they were to make a right and go on the heckle street, even though it's one way, it's uh the fact is if people were to park there, those fire trucks are going to have to go around those uh those cars. Uh, notwithstanding, we got issues with powder and snow and have you, so. It it it's truly a give and take. It it's understood that there's, there's a lack of parking. We all know that in today's era, it was never intended to have this many cars with this many people on such narrow roads. And we have that throughout the whether it's Mill Street over here, whether it's Washington, whether it's Hall Street. They're all very narrow streets, with a lot of people living in those units with a lot of cars. So at the end of the day, when we put this uh this piece of the organs together, uh we we had to get past the issue of persons trying to find parking periodically and deal with life safety. And life safety becomes the paramount reason why we we chose to put this into the audience. And that's what the policy committee looked at when it recognized those same issues and brought it forward. Uh, that's what's before you tonight. And so you have to you have to look at it from that perspective, and that's what we tried to do.
And for for clarification, we're just looking at Heckles Street between East Emmett and Oak uh in the section that it's one with the and so that's the the skinniest part. About the street there. I think Rich, she had some some feedback on this.
Yeah, so if I may, first off, I I appreciate the uh borough manager getting the information on the emergency access. I mean, that is, that is paramount in in terms of uh what we do here. There, I I I do have some ideas. But I don't know if this is the appropriate venue to to explore them, but I I will say that this is a rather unique part of the borough in that the the streets in this area, and this is east of uh Dayton and and Fillmore Streets. Um, those streets are not like your typical town streets, or historically they weren't. They they had no curbs. They were, they were more like streets you would find in uh, you know, in my familiarity and on the outskirts of a village in New York State. And uh and they're, they're very narrow. So these it it it's sort of a unique situation in in an urban area here. I I do understand that the the parking is an issue everywhere and more homes have been built here over the past number of years and hence more cars. Uh, I I was one of the gentlemen who spoke tonight said something like uh eight homes equals sixteen cars up there and 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 as I said before, people don't like it when you take things away from them. Parking is one of them. But but there is an issue with uh emergency access. Fire, fire trucks have to get in there and they have to be able to turn. And they and they have to be able to get out of there in in case they need to. The this is something that we could we 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 could act on this tonight, but also kick it back to the policy committee to to see if there are other other things we can do there. I mean, we can, we can act on this tonight and we can repeal it in two months, essentially. Um, and we've done that before. I I know it it creates a difficult situation with parking there. My concern is emergency access, uh getting fire trucks in and out of there. And um, you know, and and that's the kind of thing that could impact homeowners insurance premiums as well if uh if insurance companies get wind of this, so. I'll just put that out there. I won't make a motion for an amendment. And sort of let this ride as it is and see where it goes. Thank you.
This borough manager. How big is our right of way and I mean. Is this is widening this so that we could have the widening heckle? Because we have this blank, you know, this undeveloped land from oh. You know, almost up in Emmett, although I realize there's backyards here too. Okay, it's a map, I I mean, is there, is there a. Is there a potential for widening this road sufficient at some point to. Allow for parking to be restored?
Give me one second. So there is, in in the in the context of the. Ordinance, it goes. Looking back to nineteen thirty one and I can't find an actual, but I drove it today. It's bound, where it's bound. When I came around the corner, I went through there twice today, which was interesting because I hate and these guys are going to know. I hate going to stop and then trying to drop down a hill, it's crazy. But. When I got to the the new section, it was a car parked at the corner and just my car, not even a trash truck or a car. My 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 left side wheels were touching the. Falling away area. Can we go in and can we? Prove a little bit of the road, sure, but it's not going to give the the kind of area that. That we would need to make it a full. Full parking lane and a full lane. The best that we're going to be able to do is what we're trying to do right now is go back through coming come into. You all know this, we got to do a lot of tree work to get the canopy back up. Because even a pickup truck with a cab on it is touching the bottom of the leaves, so we've got to go in there and do that. Then swing around, go to the right and then try to push back as much of that vegetation on the. Left hand side towards the river, as much as we can to 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 get enough clearance for the trucks to get through there. Unfortunately, we're up against. Land that's owned by other folks and even if we were to find it there, it's still a choke point as you're going up. It's it's just an untenable situation, I think Rich described it better than anything, it's like, you know, in in. Unincorporated communities, they don't have curbs and sidewalks, the road just is where the road is. You see a lot of it on the, as you leave the borough, going out, scooping out, should be cycling, some of those roads, it's just blacktop and and gravel on the side. There's a little bit of road work we could do, but it's it's not going to alleviate things to safety concerns that we have here. I like Rich's idea, Miss Kurtner's idea that. An act of ordinance, let's watch it, let's monitor it, we can always bring it back and we've done this in the past. We've come up with some things, watched it, monitored, realized that a couple of tweaks here and there and we resolve it, we've got some. Locations where it's been six years since we made those decisions, so it's one. So this is a way to let us figure out how the best look at this, monitor it and see what's going on. Let us do some of the other work we have to do and and try to keep that. It's gonna, it's a give and take and and I I hopefully the folks that are here in the audience and the folks that live in the area recognize, we're not trying to. Do this injustice to what's going on, we're trying to work with it, but there's there are limitations and at the end of the day, we have to allow safety is number one.
I just want to chime in as well and say I did drive the area myself as well twice today, once around lunch and then. Once after like six thirty right before this meeting, because you know, I figured people would mostly be home from work at that time. On a Tuesday night, so you'd expect max traffic during the week, there weren't like one car parked there just now, so I do think this is probably more an issue of guests. Of the residences there and obviously we still want them to be able to be accommodated, but. With that in mind, it does seem to be more of the pressing need is the safety side of things and I think if we can enact that now. We can then move forward and try to think of more creative solutions and what else we can do in other areas, but that specific road. Is now, right now, it wouldn't fit a fire truck, definitely based on my SUV, trying to get around that one car that was there now. So I definitely think it's worth. Like Mr. Verger said, like Mr. Crack said, you know, seeing what we can do now and reevaluating as time goes on, seeing other solutions as well. And Rich, you proposed taking it back to policy to talk about, like, we don't have to send this back to policy, if we act on this today, we can take the conversation of what are we going to do for parking since we had to do this for safety back? And we, you know, we can work on that either through policy or infrastructure pretty immediately. And even welcome residents to come and give input on like what they're seeing. Because certainly I I can relate to parking, I know tonight I'm not even going to look for parking in certain areas, I'm just going to go right to the spot that's several blocks away because it's. Maybe past the time where there's going to be available parking, so I want to help anybody that we can. But if we have to worry about the safety issue, then then let's hit that and then go back to investigate parking.
Yeah, I mean, it really is a. An aberration. Street. Configuration in the in this part of the borough. So. And it, you know, they're 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 just. They're they're just isn't a good solution here, but I feel like. Our our first obligation is to public safety and we got to get. We 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 got to get. Emergency vehicles in and out of there and, you know, God forbid if something should happen and you can't. And. We didn't do something about that. That's on us. So. Yeah, so. Yeah, it's it's tough, but I I think we we can pass this, we can bring it back to policy committee and. And talk about other ideas on how to address the situation at that time and, you know, maybe come back in a. A month or two or hopefully not 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 next month, but the two or three months maybe. To see if we can come up with a more creative solution.
Any other questions on the motion to. Adopt this ordinance amendment? I see none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero and for folks interested in policy committee, that is our fourth Tuesday of the month at seven P M, so. Topics like this, bring us feedback, let us know how it is, we want to know what it looks like and and work with you on better solutions. With that, we have another motion to consider for the B A C, what is council's pleasure on this item?
Supposedly not make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending chapter one administration and government, part four bureaus, boards, commissions and agencies, a certification advisory.
Motion by Miss Webb, second by Miss Berkeley, questions on this motion? This is. Removing. Removing the B A C from. So the the final step in in the maturation process here from the B A C, questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. And with that, we need a motion to.
Make a motion to recess to a public, the recess, the public meeting to open the hearing on the conditional use application from M E K two. Property Group LLC to develop an adaptive reuse in the existing building located at one, two, three Main Street. On the track to be a multi-family residential building with eighteen dwelling units, fifteen parking spaces and eighty five percent imperious coverage.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any questions?
They're. Hi.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero.
So I know we have the applicant and council with us this evening, I'll start with a brief. Background, the borough has received a conditional use application from M E K Property Group LLC. Concerning as the motion stated, the property located at one, two, three Main Street and parcel commonly known as the. Former borough civic center. And it has a uniform parcel identifier number fifteen dash nine dash five two seven. The property consists of approximately fourteen thousand eight hundred and eighty square feet of land. And is located in the borough's R I residential infill zoning district. The applicant seeks to adapt his existing structure on the track into a multi-family building with eighteen single bedroom apartment dwellings and fifteen. Parking spaces as an adaptive reuse pursuant to section twenty seven dash three zero one dot two dot A. Dot two G of the Phoenixville Borough Ordinance. Excuse me, zoning ordinance. The nature of a conditional use application is that the conditional use is technically a permitted use under the zoning ordinance, provided that the applicant. Demonstrates two things, one. Is the qualification or entitlement to the conditional use under the criteria set forth in the zoning ordinance? And two, that there is no unanticipated adverse effects on the public health, safety and welfare. In terms of procedure for this hearing. The applicant will present its case, the applicant has the burden of proof, so the applicant will present whatever witnesses, testimony and evidence it chooses in an attempt to carry that burden. The board can then ask questions of the applicant's witnesses and any parties, which I will explain in a minute, will be given a chance to ask questions. However, you need not be a party to state whether you support or oppose the application and that opportunity will be provided at the end of the hearing. With regard to becoming a party, party status is entirely option. As I mentioned before. You don't need to be a party to make a comment for against the application. To be a party, you are able to present your own witnesses and cross examine the witnesses. However, there are certain qualifications to party status and it is necessary to be what the municipality's planning code calls an affected or an aggrieved party. That is someone who could actually be impacted positively or negatively by the application beyond that of the general. If you wish to become a party, you will be subject to cross examination from the applicant as to whether or not you live close enough to be really impacted. And how the development affects you beyond what would affect the general community. With that, is there anyone here who wishes to become a party to this? Okay, seeing none. No, you'll be provided public comment at the end of the hearing. All right, before I turn it over to the applicant, I'll mark the borough's exhibits. Exhibit B one, the conditional use application submitted by M E K two LLC dated May nine, twenty twenty three. Exhibit B two, cover letter from Michael Murray Junior Esquire dated May nine, twenty twenty three. Exhibit B three, quick claim deed. Exhibit B four, Chester County tax map of property. Exhibit B five, plan three sheets entitled conditional use plan, prepared by inland design dated March fifteenth, twenty twenty three. Exhibit B six, floor plan consisting of four sheets entitled concept design for M E K Property Group, prepared by Carnival Eustace Architects Inc. Dated May three, twenty twenty three. Exhibit B seven, Chester County Pennsylvania Historic Resource Survey Form dated nineteen eighty five. Exhibit B eight, email from Michael Murray Junior Esquire dated May sixteen, twenty twenty three. Correcting the applicant's name on the application. Exhibit B nine, true and correct copy of section twenty seven dash three oh one dot two dot A dot two G. Of the Phoenixville Borough Zoning Ordinance as of the date of the submission of the application. Exhibit B ten, public notice for this conditional use hearing on the aforementioned application. Exhibit B eleven, will be the proof of publication of notice from the Pottstown Mercury verifying that tonight's hearing was advertised on May thirty, twenty twenty three and June fifth, twenty twenty three. We do not yet have that notification from the Pottstown Mercury as we typically receive it after the hearings. But when we do have that available, that will be exhibit B eleven. Exhibit B twelve, affidavit of posting of public notice at the property on or before June sixth, twenty twenty three. And exhibit B thirteen, affidavit of mailing of public notice on or before May thirty, twenty twenty three. And a list of properties and persons that were mailed notice of sites hearing by first class man. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Murray.
Thank you, my name is Mike Murray of the law firm of O'Donnell Weiss Mate, here on behalf of the applicant. M E K two Property Group LLC, the owner of the property located at one twenty three Main Street, which was the site of the former. Civic Center for the Borough of Phoenixville. The applicant has acquired that property, I guess through the bidding process that the borough had had for it and his intention is to. Maintain the historic nature of the property and convert it as an adaptive reuse. And renovate the internal parts of the building for eighteen apartment units. Geared towards providing housing for those who work in the businesses here in Phoenixville. With me this evening, I do have three witnesses, I have Mike K Jack, representative of M E K two Property Group LLC. Megan Shomper, professional landscape architect or registered landscape architect with inland design. And Tom Carnaval, registered architect on the project who's working to keep preserve the historical nature of the property. And with that, I believe you have my exhibits to put up on the screen.
Yes, that's correct. Jen has the exhibits to put up on the screen and also you provided me an electronic copy of your exhibits for this hearing. Which after the hearing commenced, I emailed out. If you'd like to look at an electronic copy during the presentation.
Very good. With that, I would call my first witness, Mike K Jack, representative of M E K two Property Group LLC.
Good evening. I do.
And please give the. For the record.
One twenty three South Main Street, representing M E K two Property Group of one oh four Bennington Road, Phoenixville.
And M E K two Property Group LLC is the owner of the property at this time?
That is correct.
Like I showed you, it's in the packet marked as exhibit A. One, is that copy of the deed transferring the property from the borough of Phoenixville to M E K two Property Group LLC?
Correct.
And. I guess what is the process for acquiring? It was a straight sale, greenless sale, was there a bidding process?
There was a two day open public walkthrough for any inspections, previews of the property. To then a public offering of an auction that required a depository refundable deposit that allowed bidders to bid on the acquisition of the property. In mid Ju- mid July of twenty twenty two, to which I was the victor with my partner Eric Harris. And we then settled the property mid August of twenty twenty.
And I guess when you were going through that process, were there other bidders in that process?
There were.
And I guess what was the reason you felt it was important that you acquire the property?
So I've always found historical preservation in Phoenixville be very significant for me. One of my properties is the oldest home in Phoenixville, which was a very difficult acquisition and preservation, but. Bringing it back on and working very closely with Ryan Conroy, Phoenixville Historical Society, just gave me newfound appreciation for historical preservation. Which led me to multiple other acquisitions where we followed the hard guidelines as closely as possible to then recreating and maintaining the future. Of historical preservation in Phoenixville.
And part of the reason it was important requires you want to preserve the historical nature of the property?
I did. And I found the historical significance of it being the former Armory Building, which was then utilized by the Group D. Sixth Regiment of. National Guard. It then gave me a different incentive and perspective of why it should be preserved for the next hundred years.
And do you have a fear that some others who are interested in property wanted to demolish it for other reasons?
I did, and I spoke spoken to a few of those individuals during pre bidding auction. Where they shared their incentives and directions of what they planned to do, which further incentivized me to try and acquire the property to maintain. Its presence in Phoenixville for the next decade, century.
Now, how long have you been investing in properties in Phoenixville?
Just over ten years.
And I guess why don't you describe the board some of the other, you you described the oldest property in Phoenixville, but some of the other properties you.
So another property was known as the Savoy Theater in the nineteen twenties to the nineteen sixties, which had then became. A prior occupancy for the Phoenixville Police Department, there was also the maintaining of the theater there. There was also the maintaining of the theater there. It further evolved into the Hires Root Beer Orange Crush business, which then further were sold off. Superior Beverage then took over possession. They had a drive-through beer distributor at the One North Main location, which then sat vacant for about fifteen years prior to my acquisition. Spent a lot of time demolishing, demolishing portions of the building to give it a new use and an open floor plan, which led to the occupancy of Root Down Brewing Company. Another property was the former Newberry's Five and Dime and Wolfburg Jewelry Store. These two buildings were next to each other on the two hundred block, and it was kind of a hidden detail, but they once were created to exist together. Newberry's had a pharmacy on the former Wolfburg side, which then evolved into the Five and Dime Store, out of the most recently known Heidi Sue Variety Store. When the two separated, they sold off the two buildings, closed off two doorways. On demolition and cleanout, I found these two doorways. And it was then a dream of mine to connect them like how they were when the building was originally created. And rec room occupies both sides of that building, maintains historical integrity of the structure as much as possible. Another property mine is the four twenty-five Bridge Street, which was the Pennsylvania and Reading Freight Depot, had a very unique layout, which was hard to repurpose, reuse, maintaining the eight garage doors on each side with a ninth on the backside. We were able to maintain all the garage doors to be in place, but replacing them with windows and forms of egress and emergency escapes, while also maintaining the oldest road in Chester County, which is now known as just a Belgium block driveway for the beer garden of Root Down Brewing.
And in any of these properties that you've worked on in your past, have you incorporated any residential units into those properties?
I have. I have three apartment units above the rec room formerly known as the Wolfburg Jewelry side of the building. All three are occupied by local employed residents, two of which are actually employed at local restaurants and bar establishments as we are trying to maintain a cost-effective form of living and outstanding to their work.
And I guess in your acquiring the subject property, is that part of the need you're looking to fill with conversion into residential apartment units?
It has. I'm, I'm trying to be a patron of all my establishments that are occupying my properties as well as other breweries and restaurants and boutique stores. And it's been become a prevalent issue that a lot of people who are employed by these locations are being pushed out beyond the north side of Phoenixville, but to Pottstown, Montclair, Collegeville, Upper Providence and beyond.
Don't your goal to try to keep these units affordable for those type of individuals to reside here?
Correct.
And to be clear, although affordable, you're not proposing to utilize any tax-prested or subsidized housing programs?
Correct.
So your goal is to provide modest units that will be rented at an affordable price?
Right.
With regard to the neighborhoods, are you aware of there are other apartment or rental units in the neighborhood?
There are a few homes that have been converted into rentals as well as a few multi-family dwellings on the corner of Jackson and Hulse.
I have no further questions for Mr. Murray.
Any questions from council?
Yeah, could you just describe, and I realize preliminary at this point, but your desire to, when you talk about it being affordable, as you just described for the workers in the community, how are you, how do you, can you describe it in a little bit better how you planned to go about trying to do that?
So of the eighteen units, eleven of the units are more of an efficiency style layout, four of which are studio style, which an open floor plan, smaller square footprint, which essentially is a smaller price per square foot occupancy.
I guess just to follow up with that, with the finishings of them, you propose to provide more modest type cabinets, countertops and such to keep, keep the cost of construction down as compared to any countertops and some of the other units that are currently being constructed.
Correct, and we plan to have also a laundry room on the facility or in the facility that wouldn't require then a washer and dryer for each unit, rather than they have an ability to go downstairs, have their own washrooms, which also reduce the cost of appliances in each unit.
Mr. Kirk?
Yes, thank you. If I may, you've, you've talked about eighteen units, fifteen parking spaces. Can you explain the rationale for not doing fifteen units with fifteen parking spaces? Three fewer units?
I believe we are reaching required point eight-two parking spaces per bedroom, which was on the McMahon Stadium in twenty twenty-one, so that only requires about fourteen spaces. We're adding an extra over what's utilized and needed, but in the same, these units are going to be geared towards the waitstaff, bartenders, boutique operators who are working locally. These, these units and these individuals that are going to occupy the properties are going to be basically rounded up in local establishments in Phoenixville. So we have three bus stops within walking distance, one block away. So not everyone essentially is going to have a vehicle, and we're exceeding the required limits and amounts of parking spaces per bedroom.
Thank you. And if I could follow up, I didn't, looking at the plans that were provided to us in the packet previously. So are you, are you building parking in the building? Or, or exactly how are you adding these fifteen spaces?
We have, we have a, our landscape architect will describe the plans.
Thank you.
The short answer is there's, there's an existing paved area and there's areas in the rear for, for these park, outdoor parking.
Mr. Murray, do you expect to have any of your other witnesses speak to the parking council?
Yes.
I'll withhold my questions to that back. I had a couple other questions if council doesn't have any other questions. Will any of these apartments be handicap accessible?
Been discussed, but not any of them have been geared towards that avenue.
One thing I should note that, that this is the first step in the process. This, this plan will need to go through full land development review and any items with regard to handicap accessibility and required handicap parking spaces would be vetted through that process.
And Mr. K Jack, I believe you're the witness for this, but if you're not, let me know and I'll pull my questions out, but you mentioned how far the building was from bus stops. Could you talk about how far it is from different things in the community like banks, Bridge Street, where a lot of the businesses you're talking about are located, the post office, that type of thing?
There are three banks within one block of this structure. Phoenixville Federal, Wells Fargo, I believe it's Truist, that was the most recent acquisition of the bank that's next to the Beverage World, which also leads a direction of there's a beer distributor one block away, which is also nice. The Phoenixville Historical Society is also less than a block away. There's two coffee shops within one block away. There are three pear salons, or now there's four or five pear salons within walking distance, well, within two blocks. The post office is two blocks away on Gay Street on the one hundred block. We have multiple churches and religious dwelling, religious establishments also walking distance. And there's also, I believe now, eight breweries also within walking distance.
Okay. Won't make any further questions, council? Okay.
Thank you. My next witness is Megan Shomper from Inland Design. Ms. Shomper's CV is in the packet as exhibit A three, and qualifying her as a registered landscape architect, representative of the project engineering firm that is working on the site layout for the project. I can go through her voice here, but if you're satisfied with her CV, I'm offering her as an expert, registered landscape.
Ms. Shomper, if you don't mind, Mr. Murray, if I could just ask a couple of questions. Ms. Shomper, have you testified in other municipalities in Chester County before?
Uh, it's not just county, but I think, yes, it's just council.
Okay. Or the greater Philadelphia area?
Yes.
Okay. And just for the record, I see that you received your Bachelor of Science in nineteen ninety-six and then another Bachelor of Science in two thousand and eight.
Right.
And you are currently working for inland design, but could you just give me a little bit of background on how long you've been working as a landscape architect?
I've been working as a landscape architect so far. With that, I've been turned with the change in consulting. I've worked for that for two years. So I've been working for architecture firms in Philadelphia that I've worked for. Out of Manion, I worked on home side, civil engineers and home side techs, designers.
Thank you. I have no further questions. Does council have any questions? Certify you're expert, I believe you request that expert in landscape architecture, is that correct? So certify.
I do. S H O M T.
And for the record, you worked for inland design?
Yes, I do.
And what's your business?
Sixteen, Howard.
And what role have you had with this project?
I have been with this project since I brought him a month after he purchased the unit, or purchased property. I have been working with him in designing the parking layout and other landscape items.
As far as you're aware, there, there's no proposed building addition or any building structure proposed for this.
There is an addition.
Stairway, but no actual?
No.
So the stairways for access and potentially for ramps maybe for ADA accessibility, but no actual building with any wall structure?
No.
If I direct your attention to what's exhibit A four in the packet, which is page twenty-three, if you're following along, this is an aerial tax map of the property. I guess can you utilize this and kind of re-end everybody as to where this property is located?
Right. The product project is located on one twenty-three Main Street. Long Hall Street would be the main portion of the parking area for this project. And along the backside of the project from Jackson Street will be where there will be parking access, that is where the stairwell for right now is designed and also that is where the refuge area will be for trash collection.
I guess north of the site is where, is in the direction of Bridge Street.
The site is the direction of Bridge Street.
And we are in the R I zoning district.
Correct.
And directly across all three is the beginning of the TC zoning district.
Correct.
And we're here this evening for an adaptive reuse of the existing structure. I guess it's in the packet, exhibit A five, which is the existing conditions plan. It's page twenty-five in the packet. I guess, describe to the council what, what's currently on the.
Currently outside of Main Street, we have an area with black. We had a, a brick courtyard that suddenly has been converted. Enter into that side area, which as you can see there are only a couple of parking spaces. As the area, I mean, there have been people just parked randomly. In the back of Jackson, Jackson Street, there is impervious area where there is currently the ground, very young houses.
And I believe, you know, currently, the R I zoning district allows for eighty percent impervious coverage, is that correct?
That is correct.
And what is, what is currently the impervious coverage of the property?
Currently, I believe it's ninety-one percent.
And, and we're proposing to reduce the current impervious to eighty-five percent?
Correct, we are reducing it by sixty percent.
So one of the items we're asking for in our conditional use applications, if, if it applies, even though we're reducing it to allow for that eighty-five percent versus the eighty percent that's permitted. I guess, in the packet, as exhibit A six, there's a bunch of photographs. And we'll go through those one by one. I guess, looking at the photographs, is, is that the current front of the building along Main Street?
Correct.
And that's a view looking north on Main Street? And the next photograph, another view looking south on Main Street of the front of the building?
Correct.
And then go to twenty-nine, what are we looking at in that photograph?
Yeah, looking at the side. There is a slight ramp that was, was machete. There is metal fence for protection.
The next photograph?
Give you a picture, there is
Is that the asphalt that's located on the whole street side of the property? And we go to the next photograph, is that a more zoomed out view of the same parking area?
Correct. The condition of asphalt.
Go to the next photograph. So looking at that, I guess. So looking at that, uh, I guess, which I originally thought was an addition to the armory building, is that in fact or maybe adjoining property?
That is.
The asphalt is the paving on the Hall Street side?
Correct, the asphalt is.
The next photograph, I guess, is that another photograph of the same building from the front?
Correct.
Well, next photograph, that the building that's located on the intersection of Jackson and Hall Street?
Correct.
Of the property? Uh, you have any idea what that property is being utilized for?
I think it's being.
You attribute it to multiple units in that. And I guess just to the left of that is at the backside of the armory building.
The chain.
Last photograph in the packet, that the existing rear door of the, uh, existing property.
That is existing.
The stuff around there is that remnants from the prior use of the property?
Probably could be remnants of the property. Not answer that.
Okay. Uh, our next exhibit, exhibit A7 is the site plan for the property. Uh, why don't you describe for council what improvements you're proposing for the outside?
What we are proposing for the outside, this is the platform streaming as per the history of the building. And having a walkway that will lead to the, the side entrance or the main entrance and the main entrances to the, the units themselves. We have a courtyard area where the courtyard was, but it will be, um, pervious pavers and pervious, uh, landscape. It's landscape pervious, but it will be landscaped with a large tree. We have, we will have street trees along, um, Main Street. And as you can see, the parking where the asphalt deteriorated is, that is completely being removed and replaced. We are adding a new sidewalk for safety. We have three front facing, three front facing parking spots, uh, to Main Street. We have two parallel parking spots. And then we have three other parking spots that are facing that, that building that, um, you saw the picture of. And along the back, we will have, um, if you can see the additional stairway with sidewalks, with the sidewalk in the, on the side, and also there's green space there. We have five parking spots in the rear of the building. One parking spot, and we have two parallel parking spots. Uh, we have the area for the trash to be collected and we have our stormwater drain. And we also have, um, green space along Jackson Street, which we plan to.
As we move on to our next exhibit, which is exhibit A8, which is your landscaping, lighting and waste management plan. I think you described many of those, but I guess your plan, it conforms with all of the, uh, ordinances with regard to landscaping, lighting?
Correct.
And screening of the, uh, the waste management facility?
Correct. This plan shows, um, the lighting and how, uh, how the lighting will be contained on the site up to 0.1%, which is required by the ordinance. Uh, the landscape, we have three street trees along Main Street and along, um, Hall Street. We have seven, seven vestigiate, uh, flowering cherry that will be along that, which right now there, there is moving. There also be green, um, landscape islands that will be landscaped with smaller shrubs and ground cover and along the back where there the treacherous will be for the, the units. We have one light for safety and we also have two, um, of the smaller trees in ground cover and shrub, um, islands. Continue with green, greening the whole entire site. We also have some larger flower, not larger flowering trees, but we have some magnolia, some magnolia, which will stay green over in the spring. That is by the walkway into the main building and we have another, uh, magnolia, which is a, a soft. Interesting.
Now, uh, what you're proposing on these plans are currently proposals. These will still be subjected to review by the Borough Consultants, uh, the Planning Commission, and may be modified based on recommendations from those, those agencies, correct?
Correct.
Right? The township solicitor asked a question regarding the parking calculation. And are you aware of a study that was done by McMahon Associates, the Borough Traffic Consultant regarding to parking related to other projects here in the borough?
Right.
And was the determination in that parking study in 2021 determine that it's more appropriate to base the number of parking spaces on the number of bedrooms in a project versus a flat number per unit? If it had multiple bedrooms?
Correct.
And was the determination in that study that the appropriate calculation, uh, for a apartment building is 0.82 spaces per bedroom? And did you calculate the 18 units, how many parking spaces would be required for that?
Yes.
And how many is that?
14.
And we're providing 15 parking spaces?
Correct.
Now, our parking layout could, you know, upon the review and, and maybe incorporation of income cap made and turning radius and stuff could cause a further, uh, modification of that for parking, correct?
Correct.
Is that why we're asking for the, the reduction up to 25% in case that review, or the review require a reduction?
Correct.
Um, in preparing your plans, did you review the Borough zoning ordinance and the subdivision land development ordinance? And the Borough Comprehensive Plan?
Yes.
And then as far as you're aware, everything you prepared is in accordance with those regulations? And as I indicated, the, your landscaping is proposed and the lighting is proposed was, uh, utilizing the requirements in those.
Correct.
So with regard to the, the reduction of minimum lot here, we'll discuss that. There's a provision in the adaptive reuse where it's about, oh, council, up to 25% reduction in the minimum lot area for residential dwelling unit, multifamily, residential dwelling type for up to 20 units. Uh, we're only proposing 18 units, is that correct? So we fit into that category. Uh, what is the minimum lot size per unit in, or I so? This is the own plan? That your safe plan?
Yes.
If you are not a witness, please do not speak.
There's.
Sorry, minimum lot area per unit is 1,000 square feet. So required, um, allowable per that without the 25% reduction is 14 units.
And we're asking for a minimum lot area of?
830. Point three square feet.
Per unit?
Per unit.
And that fits into the 25% reduction?
Correct.
And so 25% reduction would be down to 720, uh, 725 square feet per unit?
Correct.
So we're above the minimum threshold, but need, need that relief as part of the adaptive reuse?
Correct.
We discussed, so, and the, uh, the trash enclosure is all according to the requirements of the zoning ordinance and subdivision land development?
It will be, correct.
And I have no further questions.
Any questions from council? Would, uh, would this, the seismic relief request be required if we were only looking at 15 units? Or what is the unit number that would wait to if there was not a lease granted? So you would have room for 14 units at the current zone? Any other questions from council? I have a couple of questions. And I just want to make sure that I understand, um, some of the statements. So to kind of follow up our Borough Council President's question. Well, let me take a step back. Am I correct that it is your position that you comply with our parking requirements, but are requesting, uh, the relief as an incentive for parking in an abundance of caution?
Yes.
I didn't know if that was you. I'm, I'm the one who filled out the application, so I'm, yes. Because it hasn't been reviewed by the planning commission yet, so there could be things that turning radiuses, a handicap parking space as such, if things may shift, maybe use of them in the parking spaces. 25% reduction would be down to 12.
Okay.
I thought you were asking about reduction. Uh, that is correct.
Okay. And if I understand correctly, you were decreasing the the proposal is to decrease the impervious coverage from what it currently is to about 85%. Correct?
Correct.
And am I also correct that you are requesting an incentive for a 5% increase in the permitted impervious coverage, also in abundance of caution? So as far as the incentives go, there are more potential incentives. The two that it appears you're requesting that are not in an abundance of caution are to allow a multi-family bill, building in RI District. And a reduction in the minimum lot area per unit. Am I correct? And based on the incentives possible in the zoning ordinance, you could request up to a 25% reduction in the minimum lot area per unit, however, you're requesting a 17%?
Correct.
Stop me if I'm asking the wrong witness about this, but could you talk about the trash enclosure, enclosure screening?
Trash, sure. Uh, screening would be more determined from aggression during the land planning. But, um, as we see it, it would be completely enclosed where no one can see it. There would be a lot on it that, um, that people blowing and the site would be without their trash and, um, also just safety in general. It would not be able to be seen. And you that you wore, or the combination of wood, concrete, steel and.
Okay. And then Mr. Murray, I have a couple of questions about consistency with Borough's comprehensive plan and that type of thing. Is that appropriate for this witness?
Yes.
Okay. So do you believe that the proposed use is consistent with the Borough's comprehensive plan? And do you believe the property is suitable for the proposed use?
I do.
Do you believe that the proposed use is consistent with the goals and objectives of the Borough's zoning ordinance? Do you believe that the proposed use is doctored detrimental to the health, safety, morals and public welfare of the community?
It is.
Do you believe that the nearby road systems provides sufficient capacity to adequately accommodate the proposed use and will not lower the level of service at any nearby intersection?
I do.
And do you believe that the proposed use will be able to sufficiently accommodate the safe and convenient circulation of traffic and pedestrians on the interior?
I do.
I have no further questions for this witness.
Just a follow-up on those last couple of questions. I guess you looked at what the load capacity of the former use of the property? Is that correct?
Correct.
And is it, is your determination that 18 apartment units has significantly less traffic generated as compared to the prior civic center?
Correct.
Okay. Any follow-up from council? All right, thank you.
One final witness, Tom Carnaval. And while he's coming up, um, CV is in the packet as exhibit A9. I believe most of you are familiar with Tom as a, a, uh, registered architect and, uh, he's under planning commission.
Based on our familiarity with Mr. Carnaval, we will accept him as an expert in architecture.
Very good. Tom, what's your role with this project?
Oh, yes. Uh, what's your role with this project? Um, my firm is the, uh, firm planning conceptualized right now for redevelopment.
I hate to bother you, but could you make sure you're speaking into this microphone?
And what is being proposed for this? There is no outdoor building structure proposed, is that correct?
No, um, there's a approximately 250 square foot addition proposed on the backside on Jackson Street side, which is solely a emergency stair tower and convenient stair towers for, um, access to the rear parking for the residents of the units.
And then what are you preparing, I guess, is, is the goal of the applicant to try to preserve the, the historical significant and architectural features of, of this existing building?
Absolutely. The Main Street front of the building will be maintained and restored. Um, turning the corner, the, that facade will remain as is. Um, we will be removing the fire escape, but keeping the upper balcony for, um, one of the units to have an outdoor space balcony. And then the, the building facade turns a corner and all that will be maintained. And then the facade that faces Hall Street is currently a blank brick wall for the whole height of the building. We're proposing, um, apartment entrances and a, a new roof in that area as well as, uh, windows for the apartments above. All keeping within the historic aspect of the existing building. And then the backside, Jackson's, uh, Jackson Street side, the, um, existing openings that are, that were filled in will be reopened for window openings and one will be utilized for the access to the emergency stair.
Uh, the building was constructed as, as an armor. Is that lead to the reason why there wasn't many windows and doors to this facility?
Yes, so the, the Hall Street blank facade is where the gymnasium is. Most everybody here has been in that building. It's a phenomenal building. It's a great gymnasium space with exposed steel trusses that we propose to maintain the, the interior structure and, um, just augment the exterior with windows where we can.
Uh, and then will the, the windows, uh, be consistent with the, uh, existing windows on the front of the building?
Absolutely.
And it's your goal to maintain the historical character, uh, of everything that's proposed and restored on the outside of the building?
Yes, the brick will be repointed. There is some water intrusion that the borough's well aware of that will be addressed. The roof will, will be repaired and replaced and, um, the building will be restored. And um, the building will be restored.
And I guess back into that we qualify as adaptive reuse is is the uh, property historically or architecturally or culturally significant in your opinion?
Yes, it's not just my opinion, there's a historic register card for, it is in the National Register Historic District that the Borough is part of. And it was constructed in um, nineteen. Nineteen oh seven, nineteen oh eight, and um, it appeared in the nineteen thirteen Sanborn fire maps. As that was the first year that it appeared in those maps, so it is in the registered card on the. On the facility has it as a contributing structure to the historic.
I believe Borough had entered that that part as an exhibit, we also have entered that in our exhibit packet as exhibit three twelve. Uh, and the Sanborn map that. Our preference is exhibit eight thirteen in the packet, and you indicated is that the first Sanborn map that that shows this. Structure on the property?
Yes, yeah, uh, we went back years before that, um, so it appeared between, I think it was nineteen oh four and the nineteen thirteen, so. The um, historic registered card has had more research than than we actually did, so they they said it was nineteen oh seven.
Um, in the packet. In the packet which is exhibit A eleven is your four page plan set. Showing how proposed structure is being proposed to be converted into a a residential structure. Now first, in your expert opinion, is this this uh, structure lay itself for for such a conversion?
Absolutely, structurally, it's it's in very good shape, it's just seen number of years of use. So we'll be restoring that, the gymnasium floor is um, partially up from the Hall Street elevation, so the the units. There will be. Number of units accessed right from the Hall Street parking lot area directly into the units, and those will be two story units. Will go half a flight down the stairs to the what is the existing basement of the facility. And that'll be the the living space and then halfway up from the Hall Street entrance will be the bedroom area, which is the um, existing gymnasium floor. In the main gymnasium, there'll be an additional floor placed in there and the existing steel trusses will be exposed in the units upstairs.
Um, I guess what what needs to be done to convert that gymnasium area into residential use? There's significant investment in steel girders and such to convert that area?
Yeah, there's significant investment in structurally supporting the the new floors and taking out the existing floor areas for. The creation of those units.
And I guess the other pages of your plan, is that the showing the different levels being converted into different residential units?
Yes.
And are the units varying in size depending on the location within the building?
Yes, there's there are some small units, some studio units, um, some two story units and some units that have lofts. That are on the upper level that are within the trusses of the existing building.
And I guess you you heard council ask questions about reducing the number of units, I guess. Reduce the number of units in the building would be less units to divide the cost related to renovating this across and therefore.
Yeah, it's it would increase the cost per unit for, and then I would assume that would be then reflected in the rents.
I guess would it impact the ability to borrow money to do construction on this based on returns?
I guess I assume so, I'm not in the banking business, but.
But obviously, it there's going to be a a base cost in the overall renovation of this building that needs to be spread over a sufficient number of units to make these units.
Yes.
Um, what are the varying size of the units that that you discussed, I guess, are they as small square footage at four hundred and fifty feet?
Yep, they they range from four hundred and fifty square feet to uh, twelve hundred square feet.
And if we, I guess, why don't you describe, you go back to the rendering which is exhibit ten. And that's age forty-three, you know, over the room here. I guess, can you describe the architecture and the significance of uh, the type of architecture we're looking at in this type of building?
The the architectural style, it it diminishes as it goes around the corner on the the blank Hall Street facade, but the the main prominent. Design element of the building is Romanesque, very heavy, um, looks like a castle. It's uh, has heavy window lintels and then um, keystone arches you see on that that one area and. That leads into the auditorium, and then there's a um, castle-like, almost turret-like on the front center of the main street elevation.
I guess a building constructed in this style would be, is your opinion to be cost prohibitive to build a building like this today?
Yes, it would be very cost prohibitive.
So it's it's important to preserve buildings that are. Impossible that are constructed in this way.
Yeah, I we I would not be involved, it's we were tearing it down.
And you indicated that it's already been determined to have be contributing historical structure by the Chester County Preservation Office?
Yes.
And your professional opinion is incorporating uh, this use into this building anywhere detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood, the health, safety, welfare of the community?
Yeah, it's it's it fits within the the neighborhood. And it's, as you've mentioned before, it's on the on the dividing line between downtown town center and the residential, it it is in the residential. So the the enhancements that we propose are of residential nature.
Uh, I think that's all the questions I have for Mister Carnival.
Any questions from council? Uh, the architecture of the interior building, anything that Mister Carnival?
I have, I have one. For uh, for Mister Carnival, so the the brickwork and the parapets on the front of the building, they are salvageable?
At this point, we believe they are, yes, there there is the corner where it sticks out in front of it, it is leaning, it will be. Our structural engineer will be investigating how best if we got it down rebuilt or the security.
Thank you.
Any other question? Will you be carrying the uh, lentils throughout the rest of the glazing or are you stopping this?
So we have not gotten to that design element yet, I'm not sure.
There's a lot of different types of glazing in this picture, I understand that's not what we're here for tonight, it just is uh, distracting. Various different glazing.
Well, the 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 new openings, the windows will be double hungs that are compatible similar to what's in the existing building. And the the lintels, they may be steel or they may be augmented to look like cast stone, I'm not sure. Architecturally, what we propose at this point.
Any other questions? I have one question, uh, Mister Carnival, at the beginning of your testimony. You mentioned that the. Stairway to be added in the rear would be for emergency purposes, but would that would that stairwell be used for regular access to any of the units?
Yes, it's, we need two means egress out of the building, there's currently one stair inside the building. So the the best way to get the new stair for the second means egress is by putting it in the exterior. It's actually where the Borough built the outdoor storage shed, so it's not really going, it's it's very similar in square footage of that footprint. But yes, the um, residents will be, it's won't solely be in emergency, you can park your car in the back and come in that way.
And. From the. Rendering and the plans, it appears that. Uh, apartments. I guess one through nine or one through eight, maybe, I can. I can kind of figure out where they're. Um, I'm on page forty-six of the P D A.
Okay.
I I guess. I'll just ask it open ended, uh, can you describe what the typical ingress and egress would be for each of these apartment buildings? Um, if someone's entering from outside, you know, how do they make their way to their respective apartment?
So you have a number of options if you're in apartment three. Nine, well, excuse me, three through eight, you can enter directly from the Hall Street parking lot. If. You can s- am I allowed to do point?
Sure.
So. This is the Hall Street parking area here, this apartment, you would enter here and either go up to the bedroom area. Or down to the living area, and I can show you that on the next plan, same with this one, this one, this one, and this one, and this one. This unit is accessed from back here, has a small little garden area and its entrance is here and then a spiral stair up to the bedroom, so this. Level is the g- current gymnasium level here. This is the current entrance.
Mister Carnival, if I could just sort of stop you really quick, I just want to summarize for the record. Mister Carnival was showing that uh, in between units three and four, five and six and seven and eight. There is an entrance to the parking area on Hall Street. And the unit nine, uh, there is a garden to the rear, uh, and there is an entrance in that area. Uh, and that is, these are the apartments he was describing as being on the floor of the former gymnasium.
Thank you. Apartment one and two are accessed from what was the current was the entrance for the civic center. So you would come into a vestibule where the mail would be for everybody and then apartment one and apartment two. Or going up the existing stairs or going down the existing stairs. These other apartments that are the three through nine are also accessed from the interior if if so desired. Coming in and you would go down this set of stairs and then go to the next sheet. Yes, no, wrong one, that one. So. Apartment three, four, five, six, seven and eight, th- this is that stair that the door was up up here. You would come down to this two, down to your living space, which is a two story space here within a kitchen, powder room, closet. And then. A new hall that would, so if you came in the civic center entrance and came down the stairs. You would then come through here and go through this hallway, which then also leads to the new stair tower here in the back. And then this apartment, this is its garden entrance to the living space, spiral stair up to the bedroom area, kitchen, powder room and closet. And then exit out there also.
Again, just for the record, uh, Mister Carnival indicated that residents could enter. Up near the front of the building by apartments one and two and access the hallway across the top of the plan in order to enter the lower level. The apartments. In addition, we are able to see the. Rear stairwell accessibility and the access for apartment nine to the rear parking.
And also in the the basement of the front portion of the building would be, right now, we're thinking it would be an exercise area. Common storage area and laundry facility, the the each individual unit would not have their own washer and dryer, there'd be a common. Laundry room in the building or, so these residents could easily access it as well as the other ones.
Thank you, Mister. So so every unit has stairs to get in and out of, would require to using stairs to get either in and out of the the unit and also within the unit? There are no units that are at grade in in any means, everything has multiples at the stairs?
No, the the apartment one and two on the front has great access from the, there'd be an ADA ramp to that entrance. Page forty-six.
And then there's stairs to get to the laundry.
Yes. And then. The second floor plan.
And there's no elevator intended, there's no elevator intended?
No. So then the upper floor, this is the current where the um. They care gingerbread was previously here and then in this area, and then this was the open area for the gymnasium. Two um, apartments here and then the this hallway that then leads to these upper units here. Which have a kitchen and bedroom here, bathroom in the middle and then a small loft area above here, which is then within the trusses of the existing gymnasium. And then the stair tower here, which would lead you down to the back and Jackson Street.
Okay, any further questions from council? I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Um, so. Understanding that you have. You do not have any more witnesses. Would you like to move your exhibits into the record?
I would, yes.
Alright, so move. So at this time, uh, I would accept any comments from the public. Please approach the microphone, state your name and address.
Uh, William Letstein, eighteen Walnut Street, East Walnut Street, Phoenixville. Uh, thank you council for giving us the opportunity um, to talk about this issue, um, I've been a resident on East Walnut Street for over fifteen years. I I don't think any of us, and a lot of my neighbors here with me, I don't think um, any of us have an issue with development, but the parking part of it. I mean, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I apologize to y'all already, it's gonna be another parking ramp. East Walnut Street is essentially forty-four homes, twenty-four parking spaces. If this development goes over the fifteen, even even. And I could see, could you bring, would it be possible to bring up one of the renderings? Forty-three, page forty-three, I think it was, because I can demonstrate.
Excuse me, this is public comment?
I'm sorry.
You do not have an opportunity to present it.
Okay, it was, it's just a rendering, it was here, anyway, on the, if you look at rendering on page forty-three, you're gonna see that on Dean Street, there's no cars there, there are cars there now. You're you're gonna have, that that street is incredibly thin. Hall Street, I'm sorry, Hall Street. On the rendering, there was no cars there.
Turns providing public comment.
I'm sorry?
Please take your turns providing public comment, no one should be speaking unless they're at the microphone.
Okay. Um, it's just, again, I think our biggest issue here is just gonna be the parking going forward. Again, we don't have anything against development and I think the other one, the other development at Hall and. Um, Dean, I think they've, they seem to be of. Dean, I think they've, they seem to be covering that parking pretty well. From what I can see, I don't know. I mean, again, in this area is a zone A already. So are they gonna be granted zone As? I don't know. Um, does that further burden what we're already, what we're already dealing with here? And again, forty-four homes, twenty-four spots, we can't take anymore. We just can't. You know, that just, um, I did, I could submit for the record. I did come up with ideas on how to fix this. With a little help from the borough and Phoenixville Police Department, I think we can fix this as a neighborhood. But um, that's why we comment with this, is just, I believe that, you know, it's just too much. It's um, it doesn't, again, if Dean Street ends up being no parking, it all gets funneled into Jackson into Walnut, now we're off the chart. I mean, people at this point are walking three blocks at eleven-thirty at night to go home. Um, and I and I want to say for the record that the Presbyterian Church has been great. And I think they can help us going forward with this, without the borough doing anything major, drastic reconstruction, anything like that. It's part of the ideas that I've come up with in this, but I think the church can help us as they have done. You know, but I want them to be helped too, because they've kind of bailed us out of this and haven't really made much of a stink about it, but that's my only concern really, is just the overflow of what this is gonna create. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to make public comment? Hi, yeah, please state your name and address for the record. Thank you very much. Anyone else like to provide public comment? All right, uh, if no public comment, uh, I'm sorry, anyone on Zoom like to provide public comment? Okay, let the record reflect that there is not any public comment on Zoom. With that, I would accept closing arguments from that.
Uh, and I'll keep them brief. Thank you for your time this evening. Uh, we made a presentation this evening to try to preserve a important historic uh, and culturally significant building in the borough. I know we, you know, we we heard the concerns of the residents, but really, uh, one of the goals of the borough is to provide more affordable uh, re- residential units for those that work in town. And part of the way of doing that is spreading the cost over a certain number of units so that the rents can be uh, lower that those individuals can afford. So um, and a lot of those residents or those those workers in town hopefully would utilize public transportation, bicycles, uh, and as such. And um, you know, the the parking that's being provided, uh, based on the traffic study or the prior parking calculation, uh, meets meets the requirement for the number of uh, units it's proposed. Thank you.
All right, so council typically takes these matters uh under consideration. And uh typically does not render a decision until the following month. Is that council's pleasure? Okay. Well, with that, I would entertain a motion to continue this hearing until July eleventh, twenty twenty-three at seven P M and resume our public meeting.
So move.
Second. Motion in a second. Any comments? All in favor? Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you.
With that, we we will resume the uh, sorry, do we need a mo- more motion back in? Okay, with that, we'll uh proceed to section twelve of our agenda tonight, reports of committees, boards and commissions. Up first, we have uh planning commission, Mister Moore.
Uh, there was no uh no action in front of the planning commission, so there was no June meeting. Uh, the next meeting due to some scheduling issues will be July, Thursday, July twenty-seventh at six P M.
Thank you, Mister Moore. We will move over to Harb with Ms. Dugan.
Um, I have something that I would appre- appreciate if someone else made the motion for it. And as soon as that happens, I would like to make several comments. I'll make a motion.
Before we, before we do that, just want to catch up and see where we are. Are we on uh? Twelve B, all right, so before we make a motion, I want to have a little bit of discussion because we might want to make a different motion and save us the hassle of amending motions and that type of thing. Um, so uh this item is about the uh harbor approval recommendation uh for one hundred Bridge Street regarding uh their existing building uh and the incorporation of different elements in the panels and brickwork and architectural features. So I understand that some council members had some concerns about what was presented to Harb. And I would like to hear those first before we consider any motion in this application.
Okay, happily. Uh, what I don't understand is why the 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 building itself would be fine, except it's like the cosmetic portion of it. It doesn't fit in down in that area the way it should. If we have a hard district, if we're trying to stay to making everything look, it's historic, this building that doesn't come through like that at all. In my opinion, it looks like something you'd find at the mall. It's just, it's not saying it's not nice, but it doesn't fit downtown. When they did uh Phoenix Village, they built the alley like it's always been there. Why can't they do something that makes it look more historic? Because this building, a nod to something does not make it look historic. And trying to reference it to the bank that probably should never have been there to begin with, that's my time. Um, but if you look down the street the other way, they have a picture of it themselves showing what's down the other way. It doesn't, it doesn't fit in, it doesn't look right there. And on top of that, there is no even, there's not even a mention of a mural in there. There's my comment.
Thank you. Any other comments? Um, I had a conversation with Councilwoman Dana uh earlier in the day, and I took a look at um two aspects of this. One is, you know, what is the purpose of the Harb? Uh, statement of purpose on the, on our website of the, of the, of the ordinance. Covering it, you know, um, and in part, some of these qualities shall be manifested by the continued existence and preservation of historic areas and buildings, as well as the con- continued construction of buildings in historic styles and general harmony relating style, form, color, proportion, texture, and material between buildings of historic design and those of more modern design. And then looking at the Phoenixville downtown historic district design guidelines, which are on the site, uh, page twelve states, new construction should use materials and textures in a manner that is sympathetic to the historic buildings in the streetscape. Materials should be of a similar and complementary color, size, texture, scale, craftsmanship, and applicability to the function performed. Traditional materials common in historic districts such as brick, wood, stone, and terracotta are recommended. And the Harb dis- further down that page, the Harb discourages approval of the following materials, vinyl or metal siding or capping. And so it concerns me that um Harb approved this four to one and didn't apply some of these principles. Um, it is a handsome-looking design, the p- the renderings, but all renderings are handsome-looking, you know. Um, and I think Councilwoman Dana has a a very good point that it, the the notion of the Harb and the notion of maintaining neighbor, neighboring appearances, I think is being uh pushed to the edge with this, with this design is is is, and is being violated. And so uh, I would really like to understand, you know, why um the Harb designed approved this and why the um why the applicant wants to pursue this and didn't, I think, overlook or chose to assume that we would not keep these principles in play. And thinking about the streetscape as a final point, um, yes, there is a modern twelve building. I don't know when that was built. I doubt it, I doubt if we even had a Harb when the bank building was built. Um, but I can't think of any other buildings that are modern infill on the Harb, you know, in the in the historic district that have such a modern, sleek, contemporary design. And I think we, we need to challenge um, challenge the developer to reconsider that.
So, you know, under Harb, we're evaluating Harb, we're not, this is not planning, we can only look at the cosmetic pieces of this. If you look at the building renderings, um, and you look at the existing building, if you look at Star Street, um, I don't see much changing to the actual, like, materials being used currently, that building. The back part where there's like bay doors, I think there's like garage there, that's, I believe, where the actual distilling happens. That is just the original concrete wall, maybe, maybe it's not concrete, but it looks like a concrete wall that they've cleaned up and they've painted. Here, it still looks like that. The color is a little bit different. Maybe they're gonna put in another coat of paint. Currently, what is on the corner, the structure of the building that is on the corner there is brick. What is in these renderings is brick. So is the material that we are feeling strongly about, I don't know. Um, the the material on the street, the blue, what is that material? And is that within Harb guidelines? Is that what you are questioning, Mr. Moore and Ms. Dugan? Because the other materials seem to be kind of consistent.
I think it is that apparently the middle section that is the rolled steel or corrugated steel look that it does, because the the brickwork, and again, the shape of the building, we've already proved much of this. I mean, the shape of the building is fine. I think in my conversations with other council members, it comes down to this uh, the 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 rolled steel facade that uh isn't replicated anywhere else in the Harb, in the Harb, or in the on Bridge Street that I know.
And it, you know, I mean, I think it's a demonstration of metal siding or capping. It's, and uh, and and these are common systems now, and these are popular systems. And I I appreciate how it has some on its own. You know, if it were sitting anywhere else, uh, it might be a handsome juxtaposition of the of the of the steel and the and the brick. And particularly, you know, they've been doing some selection in terms of the the windows and so forth. You know, the language is is clear, but it's, it it's gonna be a sore thumb. And we've been fortunate with the developments like, such as Phoenix House and across the street where uh, Iron Hill is, that those infills happened with fidelity to to the materials of construction. And I think we also challenged um, I forget the hundred block, the Molly's in in Phoenix building with their addition, and we asked them to, to, you know, make sure that their their facades and the use of the materials they had on, particularly on the, on the bridge, on the bridge street side, you know, were harmonious with the rest of the block.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, picking up on what uh Mister Moore said with regard to the guidelines, the guidelines inform the ordinance. That's the, that's the motor that drives the vehicle. The ordinance, the Harb ordinance section, uh, part one, subsection twelve dash one oh four, sa- um, paragraph eight, I believe it is, B, I'm sorry, B, not eight. The Harb in considering, and I'm reading from the ordinance, considering the appropriateness of any erection, so this is new construction, reconstruction, alteration, restoration, demolition, or raising of any building or structure, shall consider among other things the following. The purpose of the chapter, skip over that, the historical and architectural value and significance of the building or structure. That's B, C, the design arrangement, texture, material, and color of the building or structure. So there we got the material, or it's apparent, I I, I'm sorry, appu tonin fixtures, including signs, then D, the relationship of such building or structure in relation to the street or public way, as well as to other buildings or structures. And I know that idea relationship is very subjective, but like Mister Moore said, it has a relationship, there is a relationship of a sore thumb on a hand. So um, and I I look at this and I think back to a couple of years ago, I think it was in the Frankfurt section of Philadelphia, Carvana proposed building one of its car vending machines on a a streetscape there. And um I I don't know, I don't know if they got approval for it, but boy, they got a lot of flack about it. Uh, and because it really did not fit in with the character of the neighborhood. And and looking at this, that that steel facade or or whatever it is, done, doesn't fit. I I don't think it, it meets any, it can be argued that it does not meet any of these um items for consideration of appropriateness.
Any other comments? All right, so one of the things I have heard from Councilwoman Dugan uh was about the mural and uh there not being a depiction of the mural uh in the Harb application. And legally, I have two comments, which may make you feel better. First of all, a Harb approval does not supersede a land development. But that being said, I would suggest if we make a motion to approve, that it would be subject to the terms and conditions of land development approval provided by resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty. Second, the Harb ordinance itself in section twelve dash one oh three point four says exceptions to certificate of appropriateness. A certificate of appropriateness shall not be required by the borough for the following. A repainting of a painted existing building or feature. So we similarly would not be missing out on the mural because the mural would be a repainting of a portion of the building that's already painted. However, that does not have any, does not provide any satisfaction as far as it goes.
To be fair, that was just kind of like I'm to boot at the end of everything else. That was like, and on top of that, okay?
Yeah, understood. Um, you know, I I think uh, you know, council's position on the corrugated metal is supportable. And I I can't see over the lectern, but the applicant was here earlier, and they're still here. They do have the opportunity to comment and present their project if they like. Yes. I'm sorry, can you make sure you're speaking in the microphone?
Uh, we had presented last week too hard with our protected law entire through, which passed.
Uh, we had presented last week too hard with our architect who walked the whole entire through, which passed four to one and was profoundly. Supportive of the ideas and thought the structure was beautiful to the community outside of the studio. And as far as some of the criteria that you were discussing, uh, we are talking about a building that is not the story. Previously, I understand it. Dealership.
Sorry, sorry, from cut factory nail factory for dealership and several other garages throughout time.
It was. Do you know it was the set back after the street? The part that's been built to the front is now built to meet. Go down the street, it rises to the same level as that. As part of our Harb application, we did, I know people are focused on the bank. There are other buildings along Bridge Street that are more modern. They are not exactly historic. That is kind of what makes Phoenix real, I think, and Bridge Street great. It's a thriving borough, a thriving commercial area with historic buildings and some that are more modern and a mix in between. As a as a guy, frankly, a personal, I worked at this store. Done walking tours and other things about historic boroughs around this county. And zoning is a very modern idea. You know, partnering back to the factory time of this town, which is what our building is meant to do. Like there were, if you go back and look at the history of this borough, other boroughs, there were factories and other uses in amongst these. The idea that everything has to look exactly the same or will be of exactly the same period. Is not necessarily, I think, what the Harb is trying to get at. I understand the ideas behind materials. And we, the point of this and is made clear by. Paul, our architect and his descriptions, it's an homage to the factory history of this town. But when you're coming down Bridge Street and you see that outside of the building is meant to give the both. Factory history, this right here, that history. The metal on it is not meant to be just metal siding that we're stepping on the building. Because we don't have anything else where it's the cheapest option. It's there, but corrugated metal, similar to what in that mural right there. Is the idea, it's again to evoke that that steel that was created in this town. So I understand it is, it's got a modern flair to it. And yes, some of the buildings next to it are Victorian homes. So they don't necessarily, we didn't make it to be a Victorian. This is a distillery. So the idea that we're gonna make it look like it, the Victorian homes next door, is just not realistic. There's a purpose, there's a historic history of that building. And and it just, that's not the use, part of the you are the guidelines or the idea, what is the use of the building? Use is, it's a distillery, it's a manufacturing use. The design is meant to evoke a manufacturing use and give homage to the history. Through the brick and through that, the metal is very purposeful. It's not being slapped on and it was to just cover something. So that's presentation.
And similar to the Foundry in town, so we're one of the few buildings that have actually all Phoenix steel beams running through our building. So if you come inside, Ethelham Steel trusses, class or original Phoenix steel beams as well. So when we designed this, we kept the whole entire brick facade going there. The only section of metal coming out is enclosing a all glass stairway that kind of shows inside. Let's the street come inside and see what's going on as well. So a lot of thought and a lot of time went into how do we fit this in Phoenixville with materials, brickwork? Everything going on.
Two observations, A, I thought you would make that argument. And um, the the notion that. One of the things we're doing here, unfortunately, or not unfortunately, fortunately, is I think we're trying to defend. The concept of the Harb and the design guidelines. Um, which based upon what we've documented and what your. Architect should have been, I assume, was well versed. Was this, this, this goes too far with this deal. Uh, my second point is this, uh. Lived in center city for quite a number of years, went through society, walked through Society Hill many years. And I got to learn the history. That was one of the first, you know, restored town portions of any city, you know. And if you walk around that. You you feel like you're in these eighteen century Georgian homes, two to three stories, brick wood. But every once in a while, if you, you know, you don't even realize it, you come across one or two or four. Row houses that are were built in the fifties or sixties, modern contemporary, but they had. They were designed to fit into the streetscape. They didn't. You 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 don't even notice that they are of a contemporary design. They just fit right in. And what what I think the objection here is, I I understand your aesthetic and it's a it's a it's a good aesthetic. I'm not, I'm not criticizing that. But we we have this, we we've established this and made this effort to create these guidelines. And um, so that the that the contemporary design would work. And your building has a great contemporary design, but your use of certain facing materials. Goes beyond what we we think should be done, at least some of us here on the council.
As as my way, I think. So outside of this evening, there's the first. And it is a modern approach, but I actually think that it's actually like a postmark. And 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 again, I would I would point out that this is, your point's well taken and I understand the concern. I think if this were a society hill. Where every single home. Is a historic seventeen or eighteen hundreds Victorian home. Then yes, I would have a hard time defending setting this down. This is a thriving commercial district with a big, modern bank across the street and various other modern buildings. Some of which were made to fit in a little bit historically. For not too much. There's an apartment building, the the next block down. That is very much, very modern. It it did not strike me as historic. So there are, there is, it's a mixed district. So that's, that's kind of our point was not that we're coming in and we want to destroy everything that this borough was built. You know, I think Jared and his company have really done, tried to do what they can to be good neighbors and be a member of this community. And they want to add what they think is a, you know, another jewel in the ground that is Phoenix. Do we happen to have a slide of that that's present? There are the show.
I will just say that, you know, every time a a project comes through that has a new element, a new building, cladding material, uh, we have. Gone to great discussion about it. So this is, you know, you're you're not being beat up over this. There's. Sure, we have it in our packets. Um. And so, you know, I. And I just want to say like, you know, this, this is introducing a new element to Bridge Street that isn't existing. And and every time something like this comes up, we do review it with with extra eyes because it is. Uh, it's now introducing that element. It's now permanently part of the streetscape. So so it is important to uh to have full review.
I could add one thing. Right now, we actually have three large ones. That are in the same picture of metal and grass in the entire city. Those will actually be diminishing and kind of that's the stairway material that's built. So we are literally actually taking some material we have that's already there and then that's moving to the front area. Not the reason the same piece of there is that we have similar.
And I I think I think what I'm hearing from council, it it's the question of just the one facade element, like the shape and everything else. Is that right, Miss Dugan? Yeah, I mean, so it it is really focusing on just this one uh material cladding that we have not had on on Bridge Street. In in your view, yes. Um, and and so it that that is, you know, it's worth examining. Um, cause once that element's introduced now, is it an element that we want to see every other third door? Or or a third door front to be to be and um. Just giving you some background, it is something that we we do hone in on because it is sensitive and. That's my view.
I I would suggest at this point recess to executive session to discuss this in our quasi judicial function.
I'll make a motion to recess.
Second.
Second.
Those favor.
I.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness, subject to the terms and conditions of the land development approval. Provided by Resolution twenty twenty three dash twenty for in addition to the existing building and site that evokes an industrial. History of Phoenixville. Sorry, guys, it's getting late by the incorporation of metal panels and brickwork. As well as architectural features um similar to a historic factories found throughout the borough at one hundred Bridge Street. As recommended by Harb four one, further action memo of June sixth, twenty twenty three.
Second.
Motion by Miss Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss, questions and motions. Seeing none calling the vote on favor.
Mr. President, may may make a reserve um motion for roll call vote, please.
Absolutely. I haven't done one of those in a while. Let's mix it up a bit.
Okay. Miss Berkeley.
Yay.
Mr. Carmenito.
Yes.
Miss Dugan. Mr. Kirper.
No.
Mr. Moore.
Yay.
Miss Webb. Mr. Weiss.
Yeah.
Mr. Evil. Motion passed to six two.
Moving on with the agenda tonight, we have uh updates for the Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee, Mr. Kirper.
Nothing to report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Miss Dugan was a record. You want us to come back to you? Okay.
Okay, we do have a couple things um that are coming up that are different from our normal stuff this month. But just to highlight it, because if I mentioned everything, I'd be reading you a book. We've now got packets full of progress. But um, we've got blood pressures and screenings with an onsite nurse every third Tuesday from five thirty to six thirty. The twenty twenty three tennis clinic and orange crush tournament is um. Uh, at the Phoenixville High, uh, the Phoenixville High School Tennis Court. And that starts uh July tenth to July twenty eighth with the tournament July thirty first. The circuit class of core is a form body, form of body conditioning that involves endurance and training resistance. The that's at the rec center on Wednesday, July twelfth to August sixteenth from six thirty to four forty five, six o'clock to four forty five. And uh, fresh cheap mobile market started uh this past week. And it is gonna go all the way through November eighth on every Wednesday from ten AM to twelve thirty PM. And it's the mobile market has fresh, high quality fruits, vegetables, eggs from farmers and producers. Um, and they accept all forms of payment. The mental health one day is a free event on June twenty fourth from ten AM to two PM. With the with in coordination with the Phoenixville Hospital, that's at the rec center too. Uh, there's a pop up ballet class on the seventeenth of June, uh, it's a Saturday from nine thirty AM to ten thirty AM. Keegong, and that's a gentle and extremely effective ancient Chinese healing practice. Is on Fridays from July seventh to July twenty eighth from ten AM to eleven. Um, and then the healthy senior seminar is another free events that happens. Um, on Wednesdays from at eleven o'clock. And they check this one, they're gonna do this next one on the twelfth of July, they're gonna be checking for vision changes and vision. They'll have an ophthalmologist there uh to help out with that. And um, I was also supposed to tell you about how wonderful the uh grand opening of the mountain bike park was. And um, someone, uh, John, Mr. Evil beat me to that one. And I was also gonna mention fireworks on July second, and I think the mayor got me on that one. So um, that's that's all I have for that one.
Thank you, Miss Dugan. With that, Miss uh Berkeley with uh TAC.
You have a dogwood in the park.
And it's alive.
It's alive, it's bagged.
And it's mighty.
And yeah, so.
Mightyish.
So it's it's small but mighty.
Great. That's the update. Police personnel and public safety, Miss Berkeley.
Um, if anyone is watching, I don't know that we still have anybody hanging. Harb zoning and HRC, see your council person.
Great. Uh, Parks and Rec, Mr. Moore.
Uh, nothing further to report.
Policy, Mr. Kirper.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'll make a motion that we schedule and advertise an ordinance amending chapter ten health and safety. By adding a new part five plastics. This is our um ban on plastic bags and straws.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kirper, second by Miss Berkeley. I know we have, uh, there was some questions on this, uh, Mr. Weiss, I believe you had one.
Yes, yes. Uh, so one love the um, the the policy, love the spirit of it. The one thing that I saw that I I think was lacking was a mention of any kind of um like plant based compostable plastics. That would probably be prohibited under this, but I think would be in the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish here. So I was wondering if, and I think Miss Berkeley has a uh suggestion for a place for some kind of language that could be added to keep up the spirit of it.
So we have a section where we define compliant straws and it outlines all of those things that Mr. Weiss talked about. But it just kind of puts it at straws. I think we could expand that to items. So a cup or something was made of a, was the gavay. Yeah, all that stuff. I think if we just expanded the language to include more items, not just compliant straws, we would be okay.
Would that be a substantive change to make an amendment of that nature to uh add bags to the straw list? It would. So we. All right, so uh, Mr. Kirper, you were uh.
So. Withdraw the motion.
That the easiest. So we'll send this, so we'll send this back down to policy, uh revise the definitions to capture. I think it's a good point. I think it's worth doing, getting it right. Um, I do think it's a solid ordinance uh proposal.
Exactly.
Um, and I think it's robust and and rigorous uh far more than than most of the other ones. So.
Yeah, again, my thought is just to make it as easy to comply with the spirit of what we're trying to get after. Um, and give maximum, you know, flexibility in how.
This is just a point of order. I withdraw the motion. Was there a second that should be withdrawn to?
Miss Berkeley.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, so motions withdrawn, uh, can we still discuss or we?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Moore. I I just wanted, um, I'd like for the solicitor to comment, what is the fundamental statutory authority for us to be able to tell businesses what kind of bags they can sell? Or use? I mean, where where does that come from?
I I mean, I think it's in your whole safety and public welfare. That it's being a municipal entity. You know, I don't know off the top of my head if the state has. Issued a law that allows municipal entities to do this, but. My position would be in any silence or any lack of. Statute by the state. We as municipal, we have the ability to protect that safety and protection there and plastics are certainly.
The the one item I do remember Harrisburg passing was uh a prohibition on bag bans up until January first of, I think, twenty sixteen. Largely stemmed from Westchester's uh push. So it's been addressed that it is, not the lawyer here, but you know, when we were discussing this in policy, it had come up that this was an item that. Seems like it's been legislated in Harrisburg as something that is allowed to be done. But we can certainly uh double check that, but with the the communities around us, it's starting to be a uh, it's certainly a growing trend. And I'm not seeing it litigated in other communities based.
Okay, no, just.
Again, not the lawyer, sorry, Scott.
Yeah.
Oh, that's all right. That's you. One of the things I was going to add is obviously there's a certain different set of rules that the product operates under. They have a plastics ban. They have a plastics ban and, you know, if there was going to be significant litigation, you know, Philly would be. One of the first places in the, I haven't heard of any significant litigation there.
And we have policy in two weeks, so we can have this on that agenda and back here in July. Okay. Any other discussion on this topic? Okay, so policy will meet in two weeks on the fourth Tuesday. Went to vote on the. He, he, he withdrew. Yep, so we're good. Uh, policy will meet the fourth Tuesday of the month, uh, in this room. Uh, thank you, Mister Kirchner. Moving on to ITTS with, uh, Mister Weiss.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mister President. No, um, action or report at this time. Our next meeting is one week from tonight on the twentieth at seven PM. Twentieth, I believe.
Sorry.
I gave you an extra day.
Yeah, like, perfect. Uh, Ms. Dugan with finance, we do have item VD six or, yeah, VD six that came up.
Oh, that's right, somebody else's. I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to designate. And appropriate funds for borough council initiatives using ARPA.
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mister Kirchner. Questions on this motion? This was, uh, pulled off of our consent agenda for further discussion. Uh, Mister Moore.
Uh, I, I just wanted to, uh, for a manager to just kind of help us, let me understand a couple of questions. First off, this, do these funds expire? Or are they permanently ours?
Uh, they do expire. We have to use them by date certain. Twenty twenty six.
And then, you know, the resolution is, lays out a, a range of things it can be used for. What, what process will you take to say those funds are appropriate? And how, how will you, how will you designate that and communicate that to, uh, says either infrastructure with user project or finance or whatever?
But we have one point eight million dollars that's available for use and the resolution is written to. Commit a, the original three categories of use. The IRS ruling that came out subsequent to the initial, I mean, of those three categories broaden that. And under infrastructure to include roadways. You can get into parts and what happened. So this resolution based on what we're looking at. With the borough, knowing that we have water, knowing that we have sewer, uh, storm sewer and knowing that we have. To do, our resolution is written to cover both categories of road and municipal infrastructure and water and sewer. So, uh, as we. Bring a project forward to you, we take in a silo of one point eight million. And as each project comes forward, we draw the death number down, but you'll see each and every insurance. Kind of like a bucket, it'll be an issue, so, uh, use of flights.
And, and I think, I would think it would be helpful if we would make clear that when a project is funded either fully or partly by these funds that we make it. That we make it clear to the public that, you know, this is being funded, you know, not from tax. Not from local tax dollars, but from these kind of funds that were provided by the federal government.
Correct. It's resolution and start that we've, uh, we, the, the project to give food tonight, the, uh, Paradise Street. The project was one point three plus, uh, million dollars. We have nine hundred thousand from the, the county. So we'll use the funding to cover the distances needed for that. That'll be the first charge or use of funds. And the importance of that is that will free up funds that we currently have set aside for other projects that we definitely want to do. So all these things through infrastructure, but through finance and then.
Thank you. Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Uh, with that, this will open up the second final round of public participation. Members of the public who are joining us remotely may raise their hand digitally and, uh. They'll call on you, uh, when appropriate. Any members of the public that are joining us tonight may step up to the podium. Anything, Rodney? Nope. Public participation? If you want to step up to the microphone, if you want to take part. Yeah, now's the time.
Thank you.
Yep.
I was falling asleep.
Yeah, it's late, we got it.
Rodney Plath, Third Avenue, Phoenixville. Um, I want to congratulate. Even, uh, the, the council for bringing this. Uh, this far, the plastic, uh, ordinance. Um, you deserve a lot of credit. There are, um, about seven or eight other townships in the, in the region. Chester County that are, um, have also passed what bans and you're, you're on the way to being, uh. Uh, leaders, uh. In many ways, I, I want to say, uh, to Brian Weiss, the, uh, it, it's a. Of, it's in theory, a great idea to have compostable products included. Except that. They're only compostable in industrial composting, which is not available to us. So, um, I, I would think I would wait until there, until there are such facilities available.
Uh, I'm certainly no expert here, uh, but, uh, I, I think it'd be great if you could join the policy meeting where they're discussing this to, to bring insight.
Sure.
And I know it's.
Okay, I'd, I'd love to, thank you. All right. Thank you all.
Thanks. Anybody online? Jen? With that, we'll close the second final round of public participation. Any follow-up communications, council participation? Uh, my only question is when did the new microphones arrive? Now that we've, uh, approved them, because it sounds like a tin can tonight.
Uh, they said sixty weeks.
How about sooner?
Uh, we're hoping.
Okay.
Some readily available. I've already emailed, uh, Delco.
Thank you.
So maybe for the August, but definitely by September.
Like they're. They're extra tinny tonight, so. Yikes. Uh, with that, what is council's pleasure? All in favor? Thank you. Good night. We'll see you next month.